Brief recess to bring the Veterans Council forward for us. This is a joint meeting of the Veterans Council in the Falmouth Port of Selectman. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us this evening. It's always a pleasure to see you all. And we have an agenda item, a few agenda items that we wanted to discuss, that you folks wanted to discuss this evening. And we'll start with the National Chair Honor Program. Mr. Chairman?
And Julie, your assistant, Julie, come right up here.
Actually, yeah, you could come to the lectern.
Hi, my name is Julie Kramer, and I work at the Department of Veteran Services here in Town Hall. Thank you for having me this evening. And I'll be very brief, because there's a whole bunch of people in the hallway waiting. Don Lincoln, the director, and I went to some training that we do, and at that training there's a group called Rolling Thunder, and they have a National Chair of Honor Program. And what they're trying to do is just bring attention to the POW/MIA issue and the families of those people, and to honor them in an appropriate way. And they're trying to have a chair, a chair place in each city or town in the state of Massachusetts. And when we saw it at the training, it just, it just had a real impact on me. I thought it would be a really important thing to have here in Falmouth, and we have so, so many veterans in this community, and I thought it'd be a great way to honor them. And so basically, we set up, and if you see when you came in the main doors, it's not the real chair, but the rest of it is what it will look like, because I can't put the real chair out until we have a dedication ceremony. That's one of their criteria. And so, that's kind of where we're hoping it will live most of the time. However, one of the great things about it is, is the whole display is portable. So it can go to schools, it can go to the library, it can go to Memorial Day ceremonies and Veterans Day ceremonies, and different venues that seem appropriate for that. So some of the time it'll be there, some of the time it'll be other places, hopefully. And none of it cost the town anything. It was all by donations, so we're pretty excited about that. In fact, a anonymous donor came in and handed me in cash the money for the chair itself. And I actually really didn't know who he was, even if I did, I couldn't say. And he wouldn't tell me his name, and he just said he was a disabled veteran, and the government had been very good to him, and he wanted to do this. So that was, that was pretty awesome. So I think there's a lot of people that think it's really important, and I think it's a really nice thing for Falmouth, and in fact, we would be the first town on the Cape to have this, which I think is kind of nice, too. I don't know if you have any questions about it?
Questions or comments from the board?
Is there a requested date for the installation ceremony?
There is. I'm requesting March 28th, actually. It's, it's a Friday, and I'd like to have it at five, just because there's a lot less traffic, and there's no meetings on Fridays here. And I'd like to have the actual ceremony here in this room, because, you know, it's big enough. And then we'll move it back out to where it should be. The, one of the other criteria is that the people from Rolling Thunder will be there. And one of the reasons I picked that date is Congressman Keating, who has the trickiest schedule, is available. And some other people are available, so that's the date that we're looking at. Hopefully, you know, as many people as possible will be available to come that evening, and...
And the idea is that not that this is the permanent location in Town Hall, but not the continuously permanent?
Exactly.
If it gets moved, that's part of the program, as opposed to that's what it's going to be all the time?
Absolutely. It's meant to be moved. It's a, the chair itself, actually, it's a very simple chair. It's a folding chair, but it's padded and has writing on it, and, but it's made to be moved, so, so as many people as possible can see it.
Do you have it here?
Oh, I have it, but I can't show you.
Oh, until this dedication.
Until the dedication ceremony.
A couple of questions to you. Is the chair meant to be sat in?
No.
No, okay.
Did you, I don't know if you can see that on the stand?
I did see that on my way down here, I did. But in the original flyer you sent us, that was in our, we originally got, didn't have the roping and things of that nature. It just showed the chair.
Right.
That's why I didn't know what was down there.
It's basically saving a seat of honor for the people that haven't returned.
And I specifically like the idea that the chair would move to other locations in this community. There are a lot of young people in this community who don't typically come to our Town Hall, specifically the schools, the libraries, things like that. It would provide an opportunity for recognition, as well as the idea that maybe stimulates some conversation.
Absolutely.
It would be great if there was, I didn't have a lot of opportunity to look at it, but is there a board that we could put with it that could tell the story of it?
Well, actually, the chair itself has writing on it that's, it's basic, but it tells you why it's there and what the purpose is behind it. So that's actually on the seat of the chair.
Great.
Any other questions from the board?
I would move approval of the National Chair Honor Program and the date of March 28th as the 5:00 PM, as the, that we support, that is the installment.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments from the Veterans Council?
I think it's a wonderful thing, and I'm very happy that Julie and Don took the time to look at this, because, as Julie stated, we're the first in this area to have this. So I think this is a feather in our cap around here, doing something ahead of the group, so to speak. I think it's a great idea, and, you know, it's like the plate that you'd set for the missing person. That's basically what it is, because there are some that have never been found, so...
Ahmed, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Ahmed Mustafa, Chairman of the Veterans Council.
Thank you. Any last comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And the board is looking to hear from the Veterans Council how you folks were doing with the expanded council and the work you've been doing recently. So, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Again, Ahmed Mustafa, Chairman. And as far as it goes, Mr. Chairman, the expansion is nothing but good. I mean, I don't have any problem with it. If we could have a thousand people show up at our meetings, it would be great. But I think the idea of having the, shall we say, the group that we have, it's good because it brings new ideas in. So I think that was Selectman Moffitt's idea to more or less stimulate the thing. And we're always looking to be stimulated to bring things forward and move things on, and make it better for the veterans in this town and for the town itself, because these are our citizens. Whatever we can do for them comes back for the town. Just as a little upkeep on this, I asked Julie to put these figures together, and this is just for the month of February, and as you well know, winter is a very slow time. Well, as far as it goes, there were eighty-four outgoing business calls that were made. That doesn't include all the faxes that were sent out to the VA on paperwork that needed to be done and so on. There are no records of incoming calls, but at least double the outgoing calls to represent the monthly income calls equals approximately one hundred and seventy. We average fifty benefit clients per month and thirty VA claims for clients per month. Walk-ins can be anywhere from zero to ten per day. So I guess five would be about the daily average, times approximately twenty working days per month, a hundred walk-ins. Not to mention our ceremonies, the cemetery duties, the visits, the veterans with the paperwork or checks that have to be taken care of. Some of them can't get in here. And I know this was a request from the board as to basically what's going on in the Veterans Department. And that's, like I say, that's just for the month of February. It gets busy at times. Sometimes they're out straight. Other times, they're, they're out on the road because of information that has to be brought to a particular veteran, and some paperwork that has to be forwarded by Mr. Lincoln to the VA in Providence. So it's a busy office. It really is. And I think that, as far as I'm concerned, Julie and Don have done a remarkable job down there. It's like the right hand and the left hand. Both work together, makes a beautiful combination. Julie has been a wonderful addition to our group. When we lost Crystal, we figured that was probably the end. It's not the end. The phoenix rose again. Julie, Julie came on board. So that worked out good. As far as it goes, we're here to answer any questions that you have of us. We are an advisory board to the Board of Selectman.
Which is why we want to hear from you. Any questions from the board?
We haven't heard from everybody.
Any other comments from other members of the Veterans Council? Thoughts, feelings? All right. No news is good news, then.
Yeah, Joe Quansliani, appointed by the Selectmen, past commander of the DAV. One thing Ahmed didn't say is that approximately over a thousand dollars on Cods that can be used to stop and shop are donated by the different veterans groups in Falmouth to give to Don and Julie to pass out. So that, again, is aiding our veterans that need assistance, waiting for a check to come in, not costing the town any money. So on average, I know my DAV organization gives five hundred a year. I know other ones, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred dollars. You know, so it's a thousand dollars plus that we're giving to our veterans for our citizens in Falmouth.
And actually, along those lines, I know Mr. Mustafa had given us a handout about the donation account. Do you want to say a few things about that?
I think I gave you my copy, but as far as it goes...
Here, if you could, if you could just hand that back.
I didn't print up enough, so... The, I'll just read this verbatim. The Falmouth Veterans Council donation account is an extremely useful resource that the council possesses. We would like to see it used to help improve the quality of veteran, Falmouth veterans' lives, easing some stress and providing some comfort during very trying times. Thanks to very generous organizations and community members, we now have available resources to help in new ways. These resources are limited, therefore it is important that we have a procedure as well as limitations for those funds. Each Falmouth veteran will be evaluated on case-by-case basis by the Department of Veteran Services, and the Falmouth Veterans Council will make the final determination. The veteran must exhaust every other resource in order for our monies to become available from the donation account. The veteran is only eligible for assistance from the donation account once per calendar year in the amount not to exceed four hundred dollars. We may help the veteran with the following items: rent, mortgage, heating oil, utility bills, and an emergency voucher for food for the children, what have you. And that's basically our donation account, how it's utilized, and so on.
I think I want to know a little bit more about the veterans. What is the number that you service, you're in Falmouth, whoever?
That would be me answering that question. I'm Don Lincoln, the Director of Veteran Services. And I have been told numerous amount of times that we have between eleven and twelve hundred veterans in this town at any one given time. During the summer, we have a large retirement community here of veterans that are retirees, twenty or more years, and we have a large group of veterans that are not retirees. You're looking at, you know, a few of them here tonight that are retirees. So almost every one of them, there's a few exceptions tonight that are retirees, but you could be surprised how many veterans come through my door every day, every day.
And how many would that be?
From zero to ten a day.
Zero to ten a day?
Yes.
And could, do you possibly know the oldest, the most elder in the group? I mean, it's World War II veterans? Or are we...
Oh, yes. We, was a guy today walked in, he was ninety-two years old. We routinely see people that are well in their nineties walking in with a cane, driving in, and just saying, hey, I just stopped by just to say hello, and, you know, maybe there's something you can do for me, and, you know, what can we possibly do? Can I have one of those books? And they just want to sit there and chat a little bit and find out what's going on.
You serve a cup of coffee?
We do. Coffee's on Monday, generally.
Do they all know coffee's on Monday?
Well, it's kind of interesting. I'll go a little bit off here. There, with this veterans' population that we have in this town, you go to any coffee shop in Dunkin' Donuts, not Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's. McDonald's at, I think at eleven o'clock, which you can go to any coffee shop and any bagel shop in town in the morning, and you'll find a small caucus everywhere of veterans. And they talk about every topic, every veterans' topic, and that's how I get a lot of my information, what I'm doing wrong, what I'm doing right. So it's kind of interesting. These guys, all these different guys and women go to the different meetings that they have, and it comes back to me, good or bad.
If you had a list of needs, what would be at the top?
A list of needs?
Needs. What do you need?
Well, I was, somebody just whispered money. I was actually given some money today, so my, my wish came true, more or less. We have a budget for veterans, and we're, because of the group and some of the other information that was in the newspaper of late, our group has expanded. So the more information that goes in the newspaper, the more people find out about Veteran Services, the more people find out about Veteran Services. Mr. Viera gets a phone call, the town manager gets a phone call, I get a phone call, and it just keeps on working, and the system is working. And when I got this job, I think I mentioned that there would be more people coming in here because of, you know, we're going to get more out there in the donut shops and the coffee shops and stuff like that, and it's working. It's two and a half years, and it's amazing how many people are out there, very, very fairly veterans.
And I, and just to follow up on what Becky's saying, is I'm sure there's a number, because we, you know, I'm not looking for individuals, and I know the town pays benefits out and gets reimbursed from the state.
Yes, yes.
But there must be a number that this community can grasp onto, how many veterans we're able to help through our Veteran Services. How many of those folks, how many people actually get some form of check or a substance or, or some sort of, sort of help?
Could I just use a round number?
Yeah.
Fifty.
Okay.
Fifty a month.
Fifty a month, okay.
Yes. It's, it's not public information, the town manager and assistant town manager receive a report every month of what our expenditures are. And tied to that expenditure, the sub-report of that would have everybody's name on that, but it's not public information.
Right. I surely don't want to get into personal information. I'm just looking for the folks out there to know, you know, what we actually do and how many people we can affect in a given month.
I would, I would like to, if, back to your list after thinking about it a little bit, maybe some more exposure to get the veterans widows in here, and older veterans to stop by and say hello, and see if there's anything that we can do for them. Getting them out of the woodwork is slow, but surely a lot of people, once they get older, tend to just stay at home, and they don't get out. And the only way we get to them is through the donut shop or word of mouth. So if you know anybody out there that needs veterans assistance, just let us know. I think the new people that came on board, I think that really helped. That was a real kick. Really helped out well.
And a follow-up to that, I mean, not everyone goes to a coffee shop, not everyone goes to a bar, not everyone goes to a restaurant.
Yes.
But the senior center has new members joining every day. Can we work in collaboration with them? Try to bring forward some folks that maybe can be affected? You know, there's, you've got to, in this day and age, we've got to try everything we possibly can.
Yes. We do collaborate, and it's sort of, again, almost like the donut shop sort of experience. When somebody's at the senior center and they need something in the way of Veteran Services, they'll send them right over. They'll come right over. The same way, if we need somebody to help us with health services to do with, like, Medicare, Medicaid, or mass health, we'll send them over to the senior center for a shining counselor. So we, and we, the same thing with the community services. We, you know, we use all of these, we all work together and independently, and so...
Okay, great.
And I think one of the things we're offering, in addition to some of the monetary support and, you know, with the vouchers that you give out, is a place for veterans to come and talk about what they've been through. And I know this is something that my father always enjoys, being able to talk to other veterans about what his experiences were, and to make sure that they know it isn't necessarily just for the typical kind of help, but for the community support. Yes. A feeling of there is a group that's out there to be able to chat with them and talk about what they've been through. That's mostly, and, you know, it's just funny, because if you look at it from, and you step back and look at it, the donut shop thing really works. You know, it just, like you said, we don't use bars, though. I don't, I don't condone any, nothing against people that own bars, but I don't work with veterans that are usually in bars and stuff like, because I, you know, go to bars. I leave here at four o'clock, four-thirty, and I head home. I don't use that circuit, but I do go to the coffee shops during the morning and stuff like that, just to say hello, just to wave, let them know that I'm there. They see me.
And one point that I'd like to bring out, it's just a little time, and Doug, you brought it up, and I'm glad you did. When your dad got that ride in the vintage aircraft there, I bet he walked off there and you thought he was twenty-four years old. He loved it.
You remember the exact same fear he had when he was twenty-four, too.
That's right. And the other thing is that in the coffee shop, we have, in our particular group, we have a two-star Coast Guard Admiral. We have an O-six that comes in periodically. We have a captain.
Ahmed, help us with an O-six. Not everybody understands the military parlance.
An O-six is a colonel. Jerry Potamus is an O-six.
Okay, thank you.
And a few others are O-sixes. And, you know, so when you're in the Os, that's the officer branch, okay? The, like I say, we have a good smattering of everything. And the biggest thing, and Don alluded to it, is the fact that some of the elderly ladies whose husband has died twenty, thirty years ago said, gee, you know, my husband, husband was in the military. Am I entitled to anything? Yes, you are. There are certain things that come up, and that's where Don comes in. But they don't know who to ask. So with a meeting such as this, at least people are watching it on TV, and they will understand, hey, maybe your neighbor needs some help. Well, you've got the office here. If they're, if they're in bad straits, they can go to Don. The hardest thing is this, and I hope you understand what I'm saying. Veterans are the last ones to ask for help. They'll do anything but try to ask for help because they feel that they've dishonored themselves in some way by asking. But sometimes things just get to the point where you have to ask for help. And that's why we're here, that's why the people are out looking around, trying to help the ones that we have. And by the way, two new additions to our council, Carol Kenny and Rebecca Silva, are working on a deal with Representative Viera to try to set up something for veterans when they come back, to get them involved in businesses, how to set up their own business, and so on. And hopefully, we can get something out at the Air National Guard Base where they can work and learn, and give them a certificate. I know there are certificates out there just for the mere fact of cleanliness, to work in a restaurant. You have to have a certificate, and so on. So with that in mind, this is all part of the governor's executive orders to help the veterans, and that's what these two women are doing, Barb. So it, like I say, it's, it's working great.
I would like to recognize Mr. Viera is here with us this evening. I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you wanted to say anything, you're certainly welcome to.
Sure. Briefly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the Veterans Council. I actually came back from a legislative session where the head of Rolling Thunder came and was talking about the POW/MIA issue, and I sent an email over to Ahmed and to Don and to Julie, and she said, we already ordered the chair. Like, great, so now we're working with Bourne and Mashby to bring that there. So Falmouth is on the forefront of that. But the work that we've just begun, we actually had a meeting today as well, but the work that we've begun around Veterans Collaborative on Cape Cod. There's so many veterans organizations and entities on the Cape, and there was a group that was meeting here in the Upper Cape, there's a group that was meeting in the Mid-Cape, and we're now just starting to pull together all of these little organizations so that we can share information, and we can find out how we can all work and move in the, in the same direction. And Ahmed mentioned specifically around job training, and we're going to be working on a meeting next week with the Career Center at Cape Cod to make sure that they strengthen the database and the listing of job availabilities through their chambers, so we can link it back to the Veterans Collaborative, to make sure that those men and women that are coming back, we know that their unemployment rate in Massachusetts and in the country is twice the average unemployment rate, twice the average unemployment rate. And yet, they have skills, they have certificates, they have training, they have a commitment, they have a love for our country as we do for them. And so anything we can do to help them translate their military experience to civilian experience and to put them back into the workforce for dignity, pride, and productivity is something that I know that Carol and Rebecca are committed to, and I'm committed to doing anything I can to help them along the way. And so today, I just want to applaud the Selectmen for having a joint meeting with the Veterans Council. I know there've been some issues over the weeks and months past, but would hope that tonight would be the first night that a joint meeting between the Veterans Council and the Selectmen would be an annual event. And anything I can do to support either organization with our veterans, I'm there to do that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up a little bit on what you said, Ahmed, is that they don't come and ask for help. And I think that we'll all agree that it's not help, it's something that most veterans have earned. In other words, this is do-them. This is, these, these are benefits that they earn. No one's asking any veteran to go and plead and ask for things that they don't deserve because they earned them as a veteran. So if no one is asking for help, you're coming and asking to get the benefits that you earned. And I think we need to let those veterans know that we have those benefits available to them, but you have to ask for them because we have no other means to give them those benefits.
My question was really, what is it like for veterans who are coming back now, coming home now, as opposed to last year or the year before? Has it changed? I know that the employment needs are really paramount, but what other kinds of needs are there that, as a community, maybe we could do more?
Selectman Flynn, you're a mind reader.
Oh, okay.
Jay Romero. Right here is from the... Jay, why don't you go up, give, give your talk and let them know who you are and what you do?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Jeffrey Romero. I'm the Executive Director of the Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center. And I've been a veteran since I was twenty years old when I first joined. I failed college football player, and I needed a plan. Came back, and I had a plan as far as what I wanted to do in university, get my degree, later become an infantry officer and a federal agent, before I left that and came to Cape Cod. One of the things that we are looking at is the opportunity to help veterans seek their own path. Many of them come back and they've dealt with some traumatic events, as you know, PTSD and TBI, which is traumatic brain injury, are two parts that they suffer from, many of them do. At this point, the Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center has assisted four-hundred-and-eighty-four veterans in getting help. And what we try to provide is housing. We have sixteen beds that we can provide for them. What it is, is it becomes a downward spiral. As Mr. Mustafa said, veterans are always the last ones to want to get help because they've been trained to be self-sufficient. Many of them go into this with a very positive attitude, to be effective and do something for their country. And then when they come back and they realize they've dealt with some traumatic events and very horrible things, many of them are going back to see those same things again. They, they don't want to walk forward and say, you know, I need to, I need to get myself this. I've earned it. Because they want to be able to prove that they can make it on their own. And many times, what we find out is, we get the veteran when he's hit rock bottom. He or she has hit rock bottom. or she has hit rock bottom. And as, I'm sorry, sir, Mr. Murphy said, these are benefits that they're entitled to, and we want to catch them before they hit rock bottom, we want to be able to provide them with an opportunity to learn how to write resumes, any type of counseling that they need, any type of physical ailments, we have nurses that come in and volunteer to take blood pressure, we actually have somebody come in and cut their hair for those who don't have enough money to get haircuts, offer them rides, give them money that can help them get their, their driver's license so they can go and get a job. The downward spiral is one bad decision after another, and we want to stop that, assist them in stopping it, and start making one good decision after another, that is our goal. And as you know, twenty-two veterans a day commit suicide, and that has to stop. Okay? And that's what we're here for, and that's what the veterans of America want to do, veterans helping veterans.
Jeff, you might want to mention Joe Quinellianni.
The microphone. Thank you, Joe.
Jeff, you might want to mention what the name was before you changed it to the Cape Cod Veterans Outreach Center.
Thank you, Joe.
In case they don't, it's a new name now.
We were the Non-Vets Association, but as veterans that are associated with us want it to be, want it to be known very clearly that we are no, we are about all veterans, the Afghan, the Gulf War, Desert Storm, anybody who participated, even Grenada, events such as that, Panama, that if you're a veteran, regardless of what war or conflict or battle that you will participate, you are guaranteed these rights, these belong to you, and that's who we're reaching out to, and that's why we changed the name to Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach, because we want all veterans to know, you are our brothers and sisters, and we are here to help you get the benefits you deserve.
And what's the best way for them to reach you, your organization?
We are actually, we have a website, Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach, and we just produced a new Facebook site. If you go to Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach, you can find our Facebook site, you can click us, friend us, we'll friend you back, and you can let everybody else know about us. That is the way to get the word out. There's social media that is out there, many of the younger crowd do Facebook as opposed to Googling, you know, Google is kind of going away when you can Facebook, especially from iPhones. And if they just go on there, they can click on us, and we're going to be posting information, stand-down, other events that are coming up that, that a veteran can be part of, and when they click on it, they let all their friends who are veterans know. And this thing's going to grow, it's like telling two friends who tell two friends who tell two friends, and that is, that is our goal. Because that's the hardest thing, is to get people information when they don't know they need it, that's the other thing, they don't know they need it. If you can get it out there, and just reach out to them, be more proactive, then you have an opportunity to get a bigger audience.
Thank you.
You know, and that's a good follow-up to the Falmouth Veterans Council. You know, I consider myself young, but I surely am not young in today's standards, and, you know, the way that younger folks, I'm sure that our veterans coming home now, communicate is social media. I'm wondering whether or not, you know, this board will be talking to the town manager about trying to redefine our website in the town, but I think that's the way that we can network together, especially these veterans coming back via social media. This, you know, Cape and Islands Outreach is one social media, but you can't expect them to do your work, you can then share your, your friends, they call it, once we get it. And I'm sure, that's a great way, I know you have a newsletter, I've read your newsletter, but getting a newsletter delivered to a new veteran, a younger person, they don't like paper, they don't deal with paper, they deal with their phone, I don't know how they read it most of the time, but they deal with their phone and social media, they deal with technology. And maybe that's where we need to try to help to get the Veterans Council to be able to get more veterans involved, especially the younger ones coming home. So, that's, that's a good point, thank you very much for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Are there any questions that I may answer? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'd like to put a little plug in at this particular time. Representative Viera's assistant at his office, Kathy Palmer, will be working with me, we're going to resurrect Veterans Voice again on Channel thirteen, so we're putting together now a program to get started, and somewhere along the line, I'll probably be asking a couple of you to sit in and give your piece on things. So it's a little show that we'll be putting on, and I think we'll have a good time with it. Bring it back.
It's good to know, thank you.
Bob Dixara, not to bring the hammer down on you guys, but everything's been peachy up to now, but we have to think back, because I've been on the council for thirteen years, and for four years we tried to get on the agenda and we were refused, or turned down, four years. And I remember she asked just a few minutes ago, she was asking Don, I'd like to know more about the veterans. Well, if you want to know more about the veterans, attend our meetings. Thirteen years, and only one selectman has shown up, and that was Braga. We requested, he showed up, and not to bring the hammer down, but you guys aren't that busy that you can't attend one meeting in thirteen years, that's all I'll say.
Thanks for the feedback.
I have to bow back, Brad came to one.
Sorry?
You came to one of the meetings.
Oh.
Jay Hill.
I think I do remember that.
I know, yeah.
I'm sorry, please identify yourself for the record.
Jim Saya.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is, you folks had provided us with a memo regarding your concerns about the location of the Veterans Council, or the Veterans Office, now and going forward, I don't know if you'd like to share that with us at this time?
Well, I know the study has been completed, if I'm not mistaken, I just don't know where, what we're looking at, maybe you could enlighten us as to what you're looking at.
Well, you had presented us with the memo, expressing your concerns about privacy, and I know there were some things that had played out in the press, obviously, the board has, and, you know, Ahmed, you and I, we sat down, we met, we talked about it. The board doesn't have control over the day-to-day operations of the town, but certainly, and you had asked if we could establish policy to ensure that the veterans' privacy would be maintained, and that's one of the things that we wanted to ensure that we addressed this evening now that you're here with us and we have the opportunity to discuss it, so.
Well, I thank you very much for giving us this opportunity, and what I would respectfully ask of the Board of Selectmen is to please consider the place that we had suggested, at the community building, where there's plenty of parking for handicap, handicap ramp, they're out in the back, they have their privacy, and also, you know, it's like, if I see you walk into a dentist's office, I say, Brent, you have a problem with your tooth? If I see you walk into a podiatrist's office, oh, Brent, you've got a problem with your foot? We don't want that. If somebody sees you walking into the community center, what are they going to say? Well, you went to play basketball, you went to walk around, you know, there's all kinds of meetings going on there all the time. So that, shall we say, shelters them from being pinpointed as going to the Veterans Office in need of help. And I think that's what has stymied a lot of things here in the past, because people don't want to be, shall we say, stymied with that mark. And I think that office is fine, we checked it out, it's already wired, you can put in the computers, you can put in the phones, everything is there, because it was used as a senior center while the old senior center was being worked on. So they had to put all the wiring and the phones and everything in there, and all we're asking is that we will move all of the furniture, we will put up whatever petitions it takes, I know that we, we all have a lot of friends that are carpenters and so on, we'll build this office for zero. So you could save a lot of money by letting us do the work and taking care of the veterans by giving them that office.
I guess I had to express your confusion, because I would think coming to Town Hall, which is something that many, many people in town do for many reasons of a wide variety, would may, I would think would have less of a stigma than someone who may not look like they're going to play basketball going to the rec center. I would think that that would be more potentially putting themselves out there because they really would have no idea why you're coming to Town Hall, and especially if you're coming in the back door where, you know, wherever it's going to be, but I guess I didn't quite understand by the memo why Town Hall was a place that was putting you out there, I'm trying to understand it, I mean, as respectfully as I can, I want to really understand what the issue is. I would think the rec center would be a bizarre one.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, I can give you an answer to that. There are times in the past, and they're joking about it, no, nobody means anything malicious, but I'm leaving the tax counter, and they say, oh, I'm glad you paid your taxes, you know? It's right there. If, if you're leaving the tax counter, they, they say that you've paid your taxes or something like that, or, or if you're leaving the assessors, oh, you're moving, or you're getting another house or something, it's all there. That's why we need something aloof from this here. And I think Mr. Suso even pointed out, by moving the, the human services down to the Eddie Marks Building, it would give them the privacy they deserve, I think veterans deserve privacy also.
Silva?
Rebecca Silva, in answer to that, coming to Town Hall as opposed to going to the rec center, I think it's almost like coming to the principal's office when you come to Town Hall, this is the highest government of this town. And younger generations aren't going to come to Town Hall for a lot of things, because if there's a way to pay things online, they do that. And the other thing is, the office that's here, I don't know about the proposed possible office to transfer to, but it's awfully small, and where you mentioned, Ms. Moffett, about, you know, do you give them coffee? Well, in this new area, maybe there's enough room to have a little place where veterans can gather and just sit and shoot the breeze, have a cup of coffee, you know, and I think that's a more comfortable position for veterans of any age to go, because nobody knows that they're going in to ask for help. And like the gentleman for the Cape and Islands Outreach, if we're going to ask for help as veterans, we're going to be at the bottom of the barrel, we're going to be, I got nowhere else to go, I got no one else to ask, I'm going to go to the veterans' people and I'm going to ask them if there's any help for me. But we have to be at a point where we have just tried everything, because, and it's, in our world, it's almost a stigma to ask for help, you know, and, and if it were to be a more private place, I think Mr. Lincoln would get a lot more veterans coming in, someplace away from the Town Hall, away from the principal's office, just my opinion.
Rebecca, again.
Explain to me why we haven't made this move. Is there, is there an issue of why this hasn't?
At this point, it's all preliminary.
Okay.
The town manager's office has simply done an examination of the space needs in Town Hall, and obviously one of the concerns that came out of that was where the Veterans Council, or where the Veterans Services might be moved to, but no decisions have been made. And, and I think some of it, to be perfectly honest with you, I think some of it was a little premature in terms of how it played out in the press, that's why we wanted to bring you folks in, give you the opportunity to air your concerns with us, and as Mr. Mustafa had noted, perhaps the board could establish a policy, but we, we got to tread lightly here because we don't control the day-to-day operations of the town, and it's really outside the board's purview to say that this office is going to go here, or this office is going to go there. I think we could certainly establish, and I'll get to you just a moment, we could certainly establish a policy which, which establishes criteria so that the needs and the concerns that you folks are expressing are addressed. So hopefully that answers your question.
No, I was just curious, what was the background about it? That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, Joe Quinellianni. As the past commander of DAV, and now been re-elected, start at the bottom again as junior vice commander, and work up the chain again, I sit down with veterans, I sit down with the young veterans, all right? And do you need any assistance? Do you want to join any organizations? No, 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 yes, I need assistance. No, they're not going to join VFW, Legion, AMVETS, DAV, because there's the older generation, how do we get the new generation in? Other activities I'm involved in, and I see it with my stepbrother, I've seen it with a couple of friends, is this post-traumatic, is a serious problem medically, some of them get very jumpy, even with a backfire or a car, loud noises, crowds, they're overlooking their back, and the stigma they feel they have is coming, asking for benefits they're entitled to, and they're afraid that someone's going to see them, and they're going to get termed gun-shy, they're going to stand back. I'm working one veteran right now that will not come down to the Town Hall or go to any veterans' organization, or the VA, and I'm trying to give him some guidance, and I go to his house. You know, I'm going to give him enough information, if he does it on his own, he can get in trouble. What I'm trying to do is I'm taking him to the water, and then he has to make the decision to come down and see Don, or go to the Veterans Administration on Stevens Street, I'm trying to push him to come here. And if it means I got to take Don to his house, I'm going to do that, and I know he'll do that, okay? But these people coming back with traumatic brain injury, they're disfigured, they're walking around with limbs, and I just came back from the VA hospital this morning, and you want to come out of there and cry? These young guys coming back. I'm glad they're coming back, compared to my era in Vietnam, they didn't make it back, but these guys are coming back. They need all the assistance, they need their privacy, they need to be boosted up. As Jeff was saying, it's a spiral down, when they get to the bottom, guess what? Twenty people a day are committing suicide. We had a Falmouth person commit suicide a while back.
Last week.
Last week, not in Falmouth, where he moved to, but he was a Falmouth person. Could we have helped him? I don't know. I don't want that on my conscience as Falmouth Veterans Council, I don't want that on my conscience as a disabled vet working with a group of veterans, to saying, how did I miss that? What did I not see? How can we get these veterans? And when you're walking down the street, I can honestly speak for experience, I walk at my brother, and he's always looking over his shoulder, and he was a sniper in Vietnam, so of course he's going to be looking over his shoulder all the time. But even downtown, go to Walmart, go to wherever, he's constantly on the alert, and these veterans coming back today are like that. I can tell you that, okay? They're coming back with disorders, and I hate to use that word disorder, it's post-traumatic syndrome, it's not a disorder, it's a medical condition. So we have to help them, and if it means that we turn around and stand up and saying we need a private location, the same as any other, what I'm always talking about going down to the
Human Services.
Human Services Division, why can't our veterans, they're going down there because they don't want the stigma of being seen, asking for money, asking for assistance, but they're not going to commit suicide. Our veterans do, every day, and I don't want to see that happen. And it's you people that we elect, that you're our leaders, supposed to represent us. Well, I got three-hundred-and-thirty-three, three-hundred-and-thirty-two, I just lost one in death the other day, two-hundred-and-thirty-two veterans, disabled veterans of Falmouth. That's the number you're looking for. How many does the VFW have? How many does the Legion have? How many does the other organizations have? Who up? And if you want to know how many veterans, go to the taxpayer's office, or the registry, it lists veterans, you can get an accurate number, and that ain't counting the summer veterans that come here. We need your assistance so we can do the job that you appointed us to do. Thank you.
Mr. Viera, did you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to underscore a few things that were said. I had a meeting with the Veterans Council not too long ago, and we were talking about this whole situation, and I said, look, I understand that there's day-to-day operations, we have a town charter, all of that, but for the Board of Selectmen to just take a look at, which we've mentioned already, the Human Services Department, never have we ever discussed bringing the Human Services Department into Town Hall. We did discuss once moving the Retirement Board into Town Hall so that we could bring the registry back to Falmouth, and the decision was, we don't want to be able to have the Retirement Board in Town Hall because that's too much spotlight for folks that might be coming asking about their retirement. And so when I met with the Select, with the Veterans Council, I said, well, why don't we ask the Board, why don't you ask the Board of Selectmen to just set a policy? Mr. Mr. Suso, as the Town Manager, can make the decision of where it needs to go, but we just say, at a policy level, we have two entities in town, which we have already said deserve privacy outside of Town Hall, those that seek services from Falmouth Human Services, and for the Retirement Board as a separate entity, that decision was made by their board that their clientele, our public employees, needed that privacy. Why can't we just say, as a community, our veterans, who this afternoon, a widow of a veteran was in my office, because she wasn't comfortable coming down here, so that we could link her to the services that her World War II husband deserved? Why can't we just set a policy saying, "Put it wherever you want, but let's have a level of privacy and a recognition of the concern that we're hearing from not only our Veterans' Council, but from our Director and from veterans that live in this town?" And then Mr. Suso just sharpens his pencil, and we have to figure out where that place is. So I'm not a proponent of saying one spot. I understand there's a bifurcation of power here, but as the Board of Selectmen, can we just say, Veteran Services, Human Services, and Falmouth Retirement Board deserve a level of privacy equal to each other? And so as a member of Falmouth, that's all I would ask the Board, is to consider setting a policy to say, "We want the same type of location for those three entities," and then let Mr. Suso figure out where that best location is.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I had one last thing to add. Rebecca Silva, Mr. Murphy mentioned that we are entitled as veterans to these services and to these benefits, but I can tell you from my experience and those that I know who have come back, I've been home almost nine years to the day, and I don't feel like I'm entitled. I went overseas, I did a job. I don't feel like I'm a hero, I don't feel like I did anything special. I did what my country asked of me. And I don't think I've met one veteran who feels that they deserve anything. And we all know, I know in my head that I receive these benefits and I should receive these benefits, I earned them, but many people don't think that way, and in my heart, I don't feel that way. So it's kind of a clash in our heads and our hearts. So we don't feel like we are entitled to these benefits, and that's part of a problem as well. So I think, like I said, if there were a private place away from the center of the town, away from the hub or whatever, I think it would be better.
I will wholeheartedly agree that the veterans deserve privacy. I'm not quite sure whether that privacy is in this building or any other building, but they deserve privacy when they're talking about their needs and how to their services. I'd done some checking just recently, because I knew this meeting was coming, and there's over a hundred veterans' office, services offices, in Town Halls throughout the state. Some of the folks I spoke to at the Maya Conference said that if we asked our veterans in our community to go somewhere else, besides Town Hall, it would be a slap in their face. Everybody's entitled to their own opinion. Some folks think that it would be a slap in their face if they weren't considered part of Town Hall. Very often, people, I'm sitting in this Town Hall almost every day, people walk in the door, and they ask me, "Where is this?" They ask, they're walking in the door, "Where is the police station? This is Town Hall, okay?" But even if you were there over there, someone who doesn't know anybody, would probably originally walk in here and say, "Where is the Veteran Services Offices?" I agree that it's a line we have to walk about the form of privacy. You deserve all the privacy you can get, whether that privacy happens to be in this building, whether it happens to be somewhere else. There are other ways to give you the privacy. One is maybe an entrance that's nondescript within the building. I don't know. But I do know what our Charter says, and I know I've had disagreements with members of your group about the Charter, but I live by that Charter, and that Charter says that we don't set the day-to-day operations of this community. I think it's been loud and clear tonight that the Town Manager, when he makes the determination, and nothing has happened yet, makes the determination where the office space allocation will be, is the Veteran Services Office, needs to have adequate privacy. And that being said, that's why we have meetings like this. You don't take a vote on something and violate the Charter, but I think the Town Manager gets the drift. So you need some privacy as we move forward. Is that today, tomorrow? I don't know when. But, you know, we're still working on the space allocation, and this is a process that's gonna go forward. I sure would like to say that things happen overnight in town government, but they don't. But I agree that you need some privacy, and I would hope that that would be considered as we move forward.
Would the Veterans Council also agree that accessibility has to be way up there in the priority list also?
Yep.
I mean, that's where I try to get into, is privacy is one thing, but if it's inaccessible, if it's not someplace, I think it does need to be downtown. I think it needs to be in the central part of the town, and I understand the Town Hall may have the idea of it being the principal's office, but it's gotta be essentially located where it is easy maybe to walk to or to walk by and say, "I'm gonna go check it out right now," as opposed to a place where you're gonna have to make a real effort to get there. And I, that's where I try to find that balance that I think is important for us to be aware of also.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, to go right to that particular point, I know in the past, many times, I've come down here, there's no place to park, so you make the loop three or four times, and finally, somebody backs out, you jump in. So the parking is the big thing, and there's plenty of parking down in that area. The other thing that I would say to you is this, because it was brought up, you know, "Did you get a cup of coffee there for him or something?" Well, in the military, and none of you have been in the military, so you don't know an orderly room from a day room, but the orderly room is where the commander, the first sergeant, and the executive staff are. When you come in, you check in with them, or you go there to get an Article 15 because you screwed up. You want a cup of coffee? You go to the day room. That's where you relax. The TV is there, you can sit back, you can play cards and so on. That's why it's called the day room and the orderly room. This is basically the orderly room, and like she said, the principal's office. So what we're trying to do is save you some money, and let us do the moving, and put it in a spot that would be amenable to everybody, I believe. It's still a town building. We're not asking for a private building, we're not asking for any expenditures for the rent, because you're already paying for the heat over there and so on, and Town did a good job putting in the solar panels up there to get the hot water and so on, so that's great.
Andy, did you wanna say something?
If I may speak. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen.
Andy, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Adrian Dufresne, and a former member of the Veterans Council for 25 years. And in those 25 years, we've been able to accomplish a lot of things that made the town proud of, like the veterans, the Vietnam Wall, the reconstruction in front of the library, the ceremonies that we perform. Two years ago, we, Ahmet Mustafa and I, decided to come before Mr. Suso with an air quality problem in the Veteran Service Office. Cold and damp in the winter, hot and humid in the summer. I served with three different Veteran Service Officers, Jay Hill, Ted Gibbs, Prudy Brusel. When they were moved down into that location, the location has never changed, it was cold and damp in the winter, hot and humid in the summer. When we did, when we were told by Mr. Suso that he was gonna have a comprehensive study of the space days at Town Hall, and his recommendation, on a temporary basis, was he moved Crystal Flag in the library and left Don Lincoln in the office that had the air quality problem. If I may, Mr. Lincoln, you have a discharge with severe asthma. You've just recovered from pneumonia. The problem in that office is as I outlined. When we heard that his solution, and again, it has not been accomplished, was that we were gonna move from a place that has a reasonable confidentiality atmosphere for the veterans that come looking with their hat in their hand for services that, quote, "they've earned" because of their time in service, to the main location next to the Town Manager's Office, we felt, the Veterans Council felt, and we now have an expanded Veterans Council, I think we can all agree that that's a very busy corner. We want the same confidential atmosphere for those people that I happen to know in a 25-year period, come to the Veteran Services for the dispersment of things that they're entitled to. The VFW just donated, I believe, $800, am I right there, Julie? For food cards and, and
Fuel assistance.
Fuel assistance. So we try to do, oh, by the way, I am commander of the VFW, the last thing I ever wanted to be was a commander. But our request to Mr. Suso, I believe, was justified as outlined by Ahmed, we were gonna do everything on our own. We were gonna reconstruct something that's been vacant for, I wanna say, three or four years since the elderly people went back into their building. It was not something frivolous, it was not something that we wanted, private headquarters. We want it out of this building for the air quality problem, but we did not want to be relocated and put in a position where everybody in town is gonna, and again, I know some of the widows, I know some of the women that come in with their children looking for help of almost any kind for which we dispense. On behalf of you people, you people appoint the Veterans Council, you people appoint Don Lincoln, you people appoint Mr. Suso, you're the people that I voted for, all right? I think I voted for every one of you sitting at that office. I didn't vote for Mr. Suso. I like Mr. Suso, he's very neat, very clean, very polite, does a hell of a job here in Town Hall, but our responsibilities under Chapter 115 through you is to do the services required of the town's acceptance of Chapter 115 in 1954. And again, I'm gonna repeat, I'm a Korean veteran, two combat tours, four years in foreign service, all right? I rely on you people to make the decisions so that we can do the things that you would like to see done by us. In our request, I do not believe it's a community building. When I sat in the chair of the Selectmen, we pushed a $3.5 million building, not as a REC Center, it was a community building. This is a community function adopted by the town in 1954. I don't wanna elaborate anymore, but I do believe that the choice should be yours through a policy, I don't care how you wanna address it. Mr. Suso works, I believe, in conjunction with your wishes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
In closing, I would like to say thank you to the full Board, especially you, Mr. Putnam, for inviting us here to have a joint meeting with you. I know the rest of the Council appreciates it, and I'm sure that we'll get some feedback from the people out there that were watching tonight. And also, I would like to say, in all fairness, thank you, Mr. Suso, for at least listening and, you know, trying to do what you can in getting that study together. Hopefully, it'll take us someplace, that's all we're asking. You know, nothing is overnight, and we'll wait.
Well, we appreciate having you all, and I wanna give credit where credit is due, because it was, in fact, Mr. Jones who recommended that we have the joint meeting.
His dad must have spoke to him. I spoke to his dad.
But I do wanna thank you all for coming, and we do appreciate your feedback, and we'll take this to heart, and we'll probably be further discussing this in the future, so.
Thank you very much.
Before we break up, I just wanna make sure that any last questions or comments from the public on these topics. All right, thank you all very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, we can leave that there for the moment.
I know. Yeah. Did you ever mention?
Krista.
Oh, Krista. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I wish somebody had asked Nick before he resigned.
Doug, you can leave the table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have to go to a different team. Streetlights.
Julian, it's okay, just, yeah, we can leave that there, I don't think it's gonna be in the way, so.
I'll slide up for a minute.
All right. All right, we're all set? All right, the next item on our agenda, we have a discussion of LED streetlights. There has been some additional streetlights put up on Quissett Avenue for some additional feedback from the general public before we make any final determinations, and we have the Cape Light Compact here and the Town Engineer as well. So, Mr. Suso, I'll follow your lead on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our recent, well, the Board will recall that we've had discussions on this on a couple different occasions, including a visit from the Cape Light Compact Town Engineer. Peter McConerty has been asked to take the lead on the anticipated conversion, and it has been going forward very smoothly. A question that has arisen recently, and it harkens back to an earlier discussion that we had, that perhaps some of the listeners to the meeting this evening might be a little confused about, because I know that certainly I was initially. Essentially, the major discussion on this conversion, and it is occurring, to LED lighting essentially throughout the Cape by virtue of Cape Light Compact, is the color temperature of the lights. It's not the level of illumination, the number of lumens output, but the color temperature. And the Board may recall, and again, I'm just paraphrasing, but when we last met, we were talking about color temperatures, I believe, between, on the top end, about 6,000 Kelvin, I believe, was the amount, on the lower end, in the area of 4,000, might have dropped to 3,000 or 3,500. And again, on the upper end, the best example of the 6,000 Kelvin are the test lights that we've had installed for over a year, those on Route 28 in the vicinity of the Gus Canny Center and Police Station. I think we also have them at Seacrest Shores, Seacoast Shores, pardon me, again, a little test area, three or four lights. Those are 6,000 Kelvin lights, they are, a year ago, the, what was available were a rectangular luminaire or head, unlike the Cobra heads that we have, and essentially, those of you who've seen it have noted that it's a fairly white light for an LED. And the, about a week ago, four new-style fixtures were mounted, again, on an experimental basis, those on Quissett Avenue, and they were Cobra head fixture, and I think our representative here has an example of that, and I'll have him get up and say a couple of comments here in a minute, but much more akin as a Cobra head to our current town fixtures as far as the look of the luminaire. The ones installed on Quissett are 4,000 Kelvin, so they are warmer in temperature. Again, the contrast, 6,000 Kelvin Again, the contrast, 6,000 Kelvin at the Gus Canney Center, these are 4,000 Kelvin, and my understanding is they are generally the standard that is being installed throughout the Cape. I believe completion's nearly complete in Yarmouth, and I think in Barnstable or Hyannis, one or the other, maybe both. And Falmouth is scheduled to have its conversion of well over, was it, well over 2,000 streetlights begin in May and be completed, say, by mid-June if all goes well. Prior to the order of the streetlight, I had asked if Peter McConerty and a representative, Kevin from Cape Light Compact, could join us again to discuss particularly that color temperature issue, because I think there still is a little bit of a question there. I do want to mention that these Cobra head lights, which I'll have Kevin, if he's, if he would, working with Peter, talk about for a few minutes. Those of you who have seen the test installation on Quissette know what we're talking about. We have had police and fire representatives look at them, I know some or all the selectmen have had the opportunity to do so. I certainly have looked at those and find them considerably more appealing than the test lamps that were put up a year ago in front of the Gus Canney Center, so I believe that color temperature is much more akin to the likelihood is where we want to be in the community. But I do want to talk about color temperature a little bit more and make sure that any questions the board has are adequately addressed. What I don't want to do is have the lighting installation, the order go forward, and a question arise subsequently, because this is really going to be a town-wide project with only a few exceptions, privately-owned streetlights will be unaffected. And the other thing that is not included in our current discussion are those 180 or so compact fluorescent lamps that are in fundamentally historic areas within the town. I believe that was a more modest conversion which occurred a few years ago, so those have not been part of the discussion either. But we want to make certain, because it is going to have an impact town-wide, that we address it, and I just want to underscore the, lastly, this Kelvin figure or the color temperature has absolutely nothing to do with the amount of light on the street. That's an adjustment that is involved in the installation of the luminaire itself, so that in arterial roads as well as neighborhoods, the amount of illumination on the street can be adjusted along the lines of selectmen I think had directed when we met last time. So this is the matter of the color temperature and making certain that we don't have any misconceptions about that. I don't know if it would be in order, Mr. Chairman or members of the board, to have Kevin and/or Peter make some comments, but I'll follow your lead.
Just one question, the cost savings that we would realize, are they the same with all Kelvin, or does that change?
Yeah, great, a great question. My understanding is, and I'll have the Cape Light folks step in, is that at least down to the 4,000 Kelvin amount, the cost savings we expect are, in this community, is in the neighborhood of $100,000 annually on cost savings compared to the identical lights that we have installed there now. And as you drop to a lower Kelvin value, I believe those cost savings begin to go away for reasons that I would ask our Cape Light Compact representative to comment upon.
Gentlemen?
Thank you very much, Kevin Gallagher, Cape Light Compact, good to see you again. And I will say, right at the get-go here, that we want the town to be very pleased with what we are doing. I think if you've looked at the history on this project, the demonstration project that we've done was with a clear methodology to get it right. So again, for you folks, for listeners, for people in the audience, we want you to be happy. I think what we've done is we've learned a lot from the visits we've done to the towns. Each town has been relatively concerned about lighting, there are many issues that get you going, and this is one of them. We've attended to that in the terms and conditions that went out to bid, the project received four extremely good qualified proposers. Siemens, who we awarded the work, has given a lot of care in advising us on the fixture choices. The fixture that is out here is the selected model. The selected model is more of a Cobra head look than that rectangular fin structure that we did put up during the demo and we learned from. This was not a model that was available back then to, Mr. Murphy, your question relative to the efficiency, this actually is a fixture that provides even more savings than when I was here about a year ago. That fixture, which I've got in the box here, if we wanted to compare them, can return about 40 to 50% energy savings as compared to your high precious sodium. This actually can get upwards of 70% energy savings, and it does it, we believe, with a lot of additional benefits, including, as Julian had mentioned, that adjustability, so we actually can, on a very case-specific basis, adjust the lumens. The color temperature that you all spoke about back a year ago was one that we went with this selection because it is a warmer color. It is down in, I won't say orange, because LED is a white light, but it is in the warmer spectrum of the range of light spectrum, away from that bluer light that you've got here. I'll also say that most towns have asked us, and I believe when we met with you, you would like us to remove those, the whiter lights, so that you have more consistency, and that's fine with us. We will find another energy efficiency project somewhere else that will be very happy with those in an appropriate location. But the consistency of the look of these, the adjustment on the lumen capability, anything you want to exclude, right down to a specific street or whatever, we're happy to do that. But I think you'll see that the project, once it moves forward, is going to bring much more benefit than you would expect it, much more than I had ever expected, because I'm usually pretty conservative when I speak, to give you assurances in terms of the quality, performance. This comes with a 10-year warranty. We now know the price of the fixtures, we know the price of the install, we also have your operation and maintenance agreement in place that provides you also another 75% reduction of maintenance costs, because these are long-life fixtures, over 100,000 operating hours, they come with a 10-year material warranty, that then the O&amp;M provides you the hands-on necessary to ensure that warranty is looked after. So, it's a great fixture, I think, you know, for folks that might go down to Quissette and take a look at it, if you don't feel appropriate that location, we'll put the other ones back, that's fine. But for those areas that want to be excluded, you know, I know there's a concern with the Admiral hats, I just want to let folks know, and that's fine, if you want us to exclude those, just keep in mind that eventually those fixtures will, you know, need additional repair. If you get out there and you see there is some black electrical tape holding some of them together, they're an exposed fixture. In other words, the screw-in CFL is exposed to moisture and water, and, you know, not saying it's a serious concern, but you will have 183 fixtures that will not be part of this project, that you'll be on your own to have to look after, because they were converted to CFLs, there's a modest amount of savings if you were to go on a fixture-by-fикер basis to LED, so you would need to book some money to cover that maintenance on your own as a replacement. Just, again, full disclosure, that's totally fine if you do, you'll certainly have significant savings associated with the savings, say, that you could bank a little bit to look after that with no issues to the town. But very happy that we're together in terms of hearing further feedback from you or the public, I think we've been responsive and will continue to be responsive to all that we've heard. Again, if folks are interested in getting out and taking a look at, as Julian mentioned, Hyannis is 99% complete, Yarmouth is about 96% complete, the town of Dennis is 78% complete, and Harwich just began this week. Once they finish outer Cape, then they're going to come back this way, and the schedule you laid out is exactly what we're working toward, if not sooner. They are really going great guns despite this winter weather that we've had. So, thank you very much.
Is there a reason why we didn't get a demo of the 3,500 Kelvin as we requested?
Your special terms and conditions did indicate the 3,500, along with, you know, a review that we would do with the town engineer, which we did. We, what was it, February 17th, I believe, is when we met with town staff as well as Peter, and we did a comparison of this fixture at 4,000 versus the 6,000. At that point, we were certainly open to going to it.
Because our motion last June said 3,500 in residential areas. You were here, I actually wasn't, but I checked the minutes, and what was voted on was 3,500 in residential areas, 6,000 possibly in other places, and so I was a little distressed that the demo in the residential area we saw was not what had been voted on, and...
I understand that, and that vote, I believe, also included consult that we could do with the town engineer, which we took advantage of. Again, if you're interested in having a 3,500, we will do that. I would just, not to get an engineering approach to you, but remind you that the fixture specs come with a plus and minus 300 Kelvin. This fixture could actually be a 3,800 Kelvin. We don't know how the factory... The 3,500 could actually be a 3,800 Kelvin. So, again, everyone's eyes are unique and specific to how they view light, if that's what you'd like us to do, we're happy to bring that in and, again, test it. Seriously, if you want us to get, it will not look like this, because this model does not come in a 3,500. It would look like the rectangular one that is available as a 3,500, and we can, we can put them up for you.
Questions?
I have two questions. Number one is, the first question is, the difference in the cost savings between the 4,000 and the 3,500 we originally had talked about?
I don't believe that's as significant. If you go below 3,500 Kelvin, they would not be a fixture that we'd support, because to get that warmer light, you would lose the energy-saving benefit, and it could not be supported. So 3,500 is, in the color temperature, is as low as we could support.
So you could support the 3,500?
We could.
But the less efficient model than the...
Exactly, yeah, the savings would be a 40% as opposed to 70%.
That's what I'm asking, so that one would only be 40% versus 70%?
Again, I could probably calculate it tighter, but not having experience with those, I would be cautious to just advise you.
And one of the other questions, because Selectman Jones brings up a good point, because I do remember us discussing that long and hard, specifically, not so much about the neighborhoods, because it was a point of understanding that we needed to shield lights...
Understood.
...in some areas, specifically, in neighborhoods, we didn't want a lot of light proliferation. But the, does this eliminate us having the opportunity to get the 6,000 Kelvin in our areas, like in front of the police station, what we currently have, you know, in the rec center?
If you wanted to go as bright as that, this fixture comes in a 5,700 Kelvin model, which, you know, again, the plus and minus 300 could be equivalent to 6,000. The thing you should consider is it really a need of color of the light, or is it a need of illumination? By choosing the same color temperature with this adjustability off of this model, you can adjust your output of light, and that actually might be more appropriate in those commercial areas to have that feature.
Yeah, because, and it's important, we have to remember, there's a distinction between the brightness and the color, and so when we talk about 6,000 versus 4,000 versus 3,500, that is the color tone, so 6,000 is more of a blue light...
Exactly.
Whereas when you get down to the 4,000, it's more white, and if, I forget, right now, the traditional sodium vapor lights, what is that?
2,300.
That's what I was thinking, about 2,300, 2,500, in terms of the color temperature.
Correct.
So those have a more yellow tone to them, which is why we had talked about trying to do something closer to, say, the 3,500, which would have gotten us less of a blue color, I guess.
And the Quissette lights right now are turned down as far as they can go, is that correct?
They can go one more notch down on the lumen output. They're about 17 watt output right now, and I think they can go down to 15.8, something like that. If the board would indulge, I do have the Ledway, which is the 6,000 Kelvin, we've got this one, we could actually do a quick comparison. We did this with Julie and Heather.
Could we?
Yeah, that would be good.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this while they're setting this up? We'll start with the town engineer and then, okay.
Good evening, Peter McConerty, town engineer. As the town manager had indicated, we've been working with this project since 2012 on the conversion project, and we had, we have, currently, we have three sets of demonstration project lights, and one of them is Seacoast Shores, and Gus Canney is the 6,000 watts. This last test, this last test location was chosen, there was a meeting in the end of January with folks from town, and with certain areas of the town, and also, just catching up...
We'll get that in a second.
I'm not sure if that's catching up or picking up over the microphone, so, with certain residents of the town and a couple of the selectmen, and it was requested that we did a third test area, so that, and the third test area we chose to be down towards the Woods Hole area. Quissette Ave was the road that was chosen, it's a dark road, there's not a lot of streetlights on that road, where there are a few between on the utility poles. So one of the locations that we chose was just before, going into the S-curves, just before you get to the golf course, so we thought that would be, that would show a real impact on the lights. And as Kevin had mentioned, the streetlights are, the adjustable's, they're almost on like a rocker, basically, because the utility poles are not straight, they're not straight vertical in the air, you have to adjust them to be in the street, to keep them out of the yards or keep them out of driveways, so. And during that meeting, we thought that the 4,000 was the best, was the best light to use, between, you had the 6,000s, you had the 4,000s and the 3,500s. The 6,000s, at the last time they met, were not available, these 4,000s were not available at the last meeting. So, I believe, with, so, with the last time we did the demo project, we chose the 4,000s, we thought that would be right in the range with the lower setting, we could go on that, would bring it down as far as we could go. I do have, we did ask for feedback throughout town from residents, and I do have several emails from the police department, from residents, I have one from the Public Works Highway Superintendent. Most of them are positive, so I could share them with you if you'd like at some point, but for the most part, they've been, they've been positive.
Just a financial contribution. The project, of course, contributes significantly to the town's capital program. At some point, these aged facilities would have to be replaced by the town, it's a huge benefit by the Cape Light Compact, Capewide. This year, we are experiencing significant increases in our electricity costs, both on the distribution and supply side, which will have an increase in energy costs between 25 and 32% across the board. The savings of this project will not even cover what we expect the increases in costs will be, and so these are, these are going to be fixed costs that we'll see from year to year. This is an obvious part of the energy savings plan of the town. We did implement the first phase of that with the Admiral, Admiral hat lamps that were upgraded several years ago, and this was part of the town school for several years, and we're happy to be partnering with the Cape Light Compact.
Just one additional item, we may want to revisit, maybe with future meetings, on the CFLs, the Admiral hat lights. As indicated, there's over 180 lights throughout town, but many of them are in need of repair, and currently, we're paying Siemens, IFS Republic to be out and replacing, repairing these lights and replacing the lights. So at some point in time, those lights will, are going to need attention, so we might want to continue, continue after tonight's meeting with discussion on the CFLs.
Okay. Ms. Pompous?
My name is Tom Renshaw, Leslie Street in Woods Hole, and I've been involved in this first streetlight issue ever since 1988, when they did the conversion to the sodium vapors, and I think, I'm very proud of the fact that through our action, we saved those 180 fixtures from being converted to sodium vapor. And then, I had for years urged that, all we have to do to make them efficient would be to convert them to compact fluorescents, and that's what happened. Heather and the Cape Light Compact finally did what I had been urging for many years, because I, I'm very married to them for one basic reason, is that when I'm in the vicinity of those lamps, under their light, driving down the roads where they are, I feel happy and comfortable. And when I'm in, when I drive up Quissette Avenue now and see those lights, which admittedly are at the lowest setting, and the lowest color temperature that's offered to us at the moment, I have, every time I go by and get a glare of that light in my eyes, it makes me angry, it makes me unhappy. And I think this is even more so in the residential neighborhoods. I have a light pole outside of my house, well, I made sure that didn't get to be sodium vapor by paying the fees, which I've done for years and years. And I feel like a lot of people, whether they realize it or not, are going to be very disappointed when the actual light that we experience when we're outside at night is 10 or 20 times... 10 or 20 times what we had in those old days. I'll admit that those are, look a little dim and maybe they could come up a little, but the industry is not going in that direction at all. The new stuff is many orders of magnitude more bright. What they, they could maybe use a little improvement, but to me, they're a lot closer to what we would want to live with than what's being offered. I'm disappointed, I had a conversation with, sorry, Kevin, about the fixtures are available and we're being very much boxed in. They're working on where they can get the best deals and then they're working with a certain manufacturer and they don't do the lower color temperatures. Well, 400 is very bright and white and glaring and you can see it when you drive down Quissette Avenue. You may think that's a low one. It's not. The one that's being developed that's really the closest to the old incandescent bulbs is 2,700. And this is new research. These aren't really hardly out in the marketplace. They're, they're developing them for homes where people really care, but they're not there in this public. They're not there for streetlights yet, but they will be. So I urge you, whatever you do, get as low a color temperature as you can on those ones. Get them at, especially in a residential zone, in as low a setting. And you say that's a low setting, it's only 15 watts, but they're glaring bright. When you drive back, they are bright in your eyes. And finally, I believe something is going to come along pretty soon that will be one. And it won't if people just go along with what this inadequate stuff is being offered. I think we have to push back. And I would like to, the town to say to Kevin, wait a minute. We don't, we don't have appropriate choice right now. Can't we put off the implementation of this program and join the Phase Five in the fall or something like that? Some way in which to see if maybe there isn't a solution that will satisfy me and Kevin and all the rest in the room. That's what we need. And we're driven by wanting to get these savings. You talk about the savings in energy, a lot of that is because they can turn it down so it draws less watts. Well, that's a great idea, but really, if you made a 15 watt fixture, that would be fine. They don't do it. We've got to push the whole thing back down a little before it's going to work. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Catherine Bumpus, Precinct One. I don't have anywhere near as long a history as Tom does with these issues. And I hope I don't have as long a history as Tom has going forward because I don't want to be standing here in 30 years saying, "The town made a mistake" or "The town did something wrong." All of us who care about the streetlights are people who care deeply about energy efficiency, who want to believe in energy conservation, who want to live lightly on the earth. I am not somebody who is out there saying, "Let's stick with expensive stuff for no good reason." But I do feel that we've seen huge improvements in these lights in the past year. I mean, a year ago, we were offered even less shaded, less pleasant lights as a possibility. They've gotten better in the few months and then they were installed on Quissette Ave. They are, they are a fair amount better than the ones that are out on Seacoast Shores. They're still not great. They're still not, I think, things that will make everybody really happy in their neighborhoods. As you drive by, they're not as shielded as the Admiral hat lights. I'm pleased to hear in a way that the Admiral hats are not being included because they are more shielded than the, any of the current fixtures that are being offered. And they give a much nicer sense as you're driving up to them. If you look at why we have streetlights at all, we have streetlights mostly for pedestrian safety. And if you have a bright pool of light and you walk out of that bright, white pool of light into a dark shadow, you have lost your sense of where you are and you've lost your, your ability to see in the night. A warmer, cooler, a warmer, less bright temperature is really important for pedestrians especially because you don't get the harsh shadows. Last fall, walking into town meeting, I don't know how many of you parked in the parking lot, they put up bright work lights so that people could see in the parking lot. As soon as you stepped out of the light, you were blind. It's not quite as bad with these streetlights, but it comes kind of close because there really is a big difference in temperature and color. So I'd appreciate if you maybe put the brakes on for a little bit on this project and see what else they come up with if we joined Phase Five, which is out there for the Cape Light Compact as the next phase and see if in six months, there is a better lighting opportunity because there have been since then, these improvements have been made.
Thank you.
I did go to see the various demonstration projects. I, I don't think they've been well-publicized at all and it's fine to say, well, they're in thoroughfares that people use. In fact, I live very close to Quissette Avenue and I never, ever drive down it at night. And until I went to see the Seacoast Shores lights, I'd never driven down that at night. I, I think people need to know that these lights are out there and have a chance to look at them. And my other comment is, I haven't really heard why we can't have a 3,500 light demonstration. And it should be next to one of these others, next to the 4,000s, so that we have something to compare. Once we make this change, we're, we're riding that change for quite a while. I, I think, I, I agree with the idea of holding back a little and seeing what happens. I also read that the cost of the LED lights is coming down about 25% a year and they expect that to go on for a little while, this for the bulbs. This was, the City of Pittsburgh did this study. We need to save money on these things and we need to do what is energy-conscious, but we don't need to leap on a bandwagon, which isn't actually pulling away from us yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Could we see the demo? Then we can start to...
Which was like first, the 6,000 or the...
6,000 first.
This isn't the 3,500 either.
This is not 3,500. This is the fixtures that are up right now as far as the demonstrations out by Gus Kenny Center and by Seacoast Shores.
Maybe it would help if we dim the lights a little bit so we can get a better picture of the color.
Should we get these lights up?
I want to dim it.
Kevin, did you want that screen down so you can shine it on the light or does it not?
I think you'll be able to see a very noticeable difference. If you want to pull it down, Peter, it might give you the blue as compared.
It doesn't do anything.
The other thing is to see what the light looks like reflected off some person. We have a person, thank you very much, David Keeler. So we could look at that?
You may not want to.
I will not put this in your eyeballs.
It's a little on the bright side, actually. Yeah.
I'd like to look at it.
Well, I would suggest you come step up here because we don't want to blind the audience to be, it's, it is very bright, actually.
Excuse me, you look up sometimes. You want to see what it's going to do to your eyes?
Well, I certainly wouldn't be looking into these, I'll tell you that. I was just over there, so.
Look at, look at what it's reflecting off of, looking at the light. And keep in mind, these are usually located at 25 to 30 feet elevation, so you wouldn't be looking at it at 12 feet of distance. You'd be 30 feet away. So that's your 6,000 Kelvin.
Okay.
Turned down or is that, is that one adjustable?
No.
This is not adjustable. It can be specified from factory, but it's a cycle of six to eight weeks. And then if you remember what that color temperature...
Oh, yeah, you can see that there's definitely a difference.
This is the warmer 4,000 color temperature. So we have a unit in front of us now.
And what, how is that set right now? At the lowest notch or the...
I have to open it up.
Oh, you have to open it?
To see what the setting is, but they're relative lumens comparable. But this is the warmer light. And again, as I mentioned, the, not only the design of these, but the adjustability is a real benefit. So if in fact you did want to notch down the lumens a little bit further, you can...
And so for the folks, because you don't have a microphone, the folks at home may not have seen, but the square fixture, that's the 6,000 Kelvins, that's the bright, that's the bluer light. And the Cobra Head fixture that you just were, were holding, that's the 4,000 Kelvins, which is the, the more white, getting to the red end of the spectrum.
But the other thing too, you know, some of the questions we've got is that, well, called the rectangular, its model name is called the Ledway. That is the one that we could procure 3,500 Kelvin.
Folks, could you keep it down a little, please? Thank you.
And the Ledway was the only thing available in June.
At the time, we did the down.
So nine months later, we have this wonderful thing that's adjustable, that's the Cobra Head. And it makes me really think, literally, suggestion, wait five, six months and we may have exactly what we want.
And then the project will be gone. I have to wrap this project up, meaning everything installed, QC inspected, your billing revisions done by December 31st. So folks are right to understand that there is a Phase Five, but that Phase Five is being completed right now. In other words, once we have that final report done by May, that gives us the lead time to order the fixtures for then a fall install. So if you want to take more time, which I'm totally fine with, you'd need to take it between the next month, month and a half.
Okay. Two questions. Could you get us a fixture at the 3,500 or even better, at something closer to 3,000 Kelvin, if that's possible, so that we can see the, the difference? If you could come back with all three fixtures so we could get a picture of that?
You want...
And also, as was suggested, if, if it's possible to install one of these in that same vicinity so folks can in, out in the wild, so to speak, see the difference between the 4,000 and say the 3,500. The other thing, what I've heard tonight and what I noticed myself as well is glare. And when you were before us last time, you did talk about the fact that we might be able to shield these. And obviously, when, when you're dealing, and especially Quissette is, is an excellent road as an example, where you're dealing with dips and curves and perhaps it's not so much as the color or the brightness of the fixture, but maybe it's just glare.
Exactly.
And is there any way to shield these fixtures so that we can address the glare issue?
Right. In the specs, we did require the shielding. The XSP, which is the more Cobra Head looking light, does come with either a factory specified or a field-installed screwed-on mounted shield. That was one of the benefits of choosing that fixture as well. The Ledway fixture has a shield that's field-attached using double-sided tape. I don't believe that's appropriate for our environment. It seems to be working in, you know, other communities, but we wouldn't have, you know, chosen that method. But yes, shielding can be done. The other thing with the fixtures is there is a slight amount of adjusting that can be done to the fixture, both on the horizontal and vertical angle. Again, poles, as Peter indicated, are not always, you know, true, so we have some capability. The technicians and the field crew really do give a lot of attention to individual streets, individual homeowners. We've had great feedback throughout. There's over 4,000 fixtures that have been installed to date. And I can say, on one hand, the comments that we've had from residents, we've responded to them that day and adjusted for glare, leg trespass, with 100% satisfaction. But again, if for any reason you guys want to hold back, that is fine, but this project, you will need to be on board, I would say, by, by May. You really do need to. Otherwise, this project will be something that is gone. You can revisit it at some future year, but it will not be as it's constructed. And the other thing, some comments were made about the cost of LEDs coming down and we've all benefited by that. However, we have got such a bulk buy of this project, you will never see the cost savings that we've brought. We're, we're acquiring over 16,000 fixtures. So if we're back to acquire, you know, 2,500 for you in another phase, I mean, hopefully the costs continue to come down, but I doubt that that is a real factor to weigh in terms of a strong consideration.
Kevin?
The shielding, the, the one with, that we have installed at 3,500, is that the one that has shielding?
Both come with shielding.
Well, one has the double tape. That's my, which one has the double tape?
The Ledway on the left, the one that we've done in the demo.
The 6,000?
Right, exactly.
Okay. So did you put any shielding on any of the Quissette Avenue?
No, and we could do that. Yeah, I, you know, this is the first comments and feedback I've received about glare. I mean, we could be out there tomorrow putting shields on. We're happy to do that. Again, you're my customer.
Well, I think it's important that, following up what Doug said, we see one that looks, that has some shielding on it and try one that, well, first of all, let's make sure that we turn it all the way down.
Yeah.
Then we have an option to see it.
Mm-hmm.
And then, as Brent said, if there's a 3,500 out there, but one of those is...
Exactly.
But I, I do have to follow up. You told us what the cost saving is on this particular fixture. The 3,500, what's the difference between the 3,500 and this 4,000 fixture, adjusted, not adjusted, cost savings?
It's basically because of the two fixture models. The one on the left is the older model that does not bring as significant an energy savings. That's the only one that we can go down in the color temperature range. So you're looking at a 40 to 50% energy savings.
And then we wouldn't have good shielding with that either.
I mean...
It's a loser and all.
Well, no.
Okay.
I wouldn't say it's...
Except for the 3,500. I mean, unfortunately, it's also what you brought to us in June and told us this was the best, this is fantastic. And you even advertised that they had these little shielding things, they were going to be great, that now saying, oh, it's just double-sided tape. I mean, it's...
And that's why we did the demo. We, we learned from that and that helped specify what we really would want to select for Cape communities. Again, just because it's double-sided tape doesn't mean that it's a problem. It will do the shielding. It just may need to be visited, you know, every three or four years. Again, you have an O and M contract. Contractors will do that. So I think the message here is, this is all good. I mean, we are going to be investing almost a million dollars in this community. We're going to be saving you $140,000 a year. Let's get it right and let's take the time to do it, but let's do it this year.
Another question I have for you just, on your expertise, do you think any of us will see a difference between 3,500 and 4,000?
I have a crowd that I'm sure will throw things at me. I've looked at them. We did test 3,500 right at the intersection of Barnstable Road and Hyannis Road in Barnstable Village. We tested them in Provincetown. My eyes, I'm 58 years old, I cannot tell the difference, but I would be the first to say, "You would." And, and again, lighting is so personal, it's sensitive, and I'm not here to upset anybody, but it may be noticeable to people.
Because I see, I see three or four different pluses to...
Exactly.
The Cobra Head. And if there's not enough difference in the lighting, I don't know what to do, but...
I totally understand.
Rebecca?
I think the first time that you came to the Selectman, and I've said this on other issues, sometimes it's a foreign language. And I think as I'm listening to you this evening, I understand, but it's all moving parts. And most things that we're involved with today, in two months, it's going to be different. It was different six months ago. It was different when you came in the fall. So I think it's at a point that we need to have the product we want to have at the price we want to have it, when we want to have it.
Okay.
And I think when we say, "But there is something that is better," I'm sure there is within two months. I'm sure that in a year, it'll even be cheaper. I think it is down to the point to make a decision because the parts and all of the information keep changing. You have a bit of a different story tonight than you did in the fall. And as I'm listening to you, I'm, I agree with what I hear you say.
Thanks.
And I think the other part is the sentence you just said, "We all view that light a little differently with our set of eyes." So what is it the town needs? Because these parts are going to keep moving and it's going to be a different number and it's going to be a different color and it's going to be warm and each person is going to look at it. So I believe as Selectmen, we need to realize it, it's, it's shifting. And, and I would say the, the group of us looking from this area and I'm looking at that light on, I would write down in this paper the words that I see that is that color and every one of us would have a different choice.
unanimous on that decision.
Heather, you had something to add or...
Well, there's a color chart. I don't know if that would be helpful for the board to look at, but it does, it's the gradient between the 3,500 and the 4,000 is very small.
Okay.
From a color chart. From a color chart.
Is there a Peter is a.
Oh, okay.
I'm Dick Taylor, and I'm just interested in seeing, let's progress ahead. And I don't know why you care about the price. Kevin's picking up the tab. When it goes down, he'll give a little more money. He doesn't, he doesn't want to save that money. So I think price should drop out of the discussion. The cost is zero. It's not, I don't know if they'll pay us to take them. I think it's a pretty big price. I've set this lamp here to be the lowest setting.
Dick, you'll need to stick with the microphone if you're going to continue talking.
You want the lights off?
Not just yet.
Okay, I just set the switch in this light to be the lowest setting, if you're interested in that. We have to shine up here.
Okay.
And what is the setting?
What is the, I have a question from the audience, what the setting, the lowest level is?
What the setting does is it goes from I to A, letter, with A being the highest output, 100%. And when you set it to I, it goes down to about 28% output. So it's probably in the 1,500 lumens, or equivalent to about 15 watts.
So 1,500 lumens for our reference? Well, how does that compare to, say, what we might see right now with a Cobra head on the street?
With a Cobra head, this would, believe it or not, be almost 50% lower. Again, it's the difference between the lighting source and, you know, the alphabet soup that I bring to you. I'm trying to keep it very basic.
Understood.
This is a directional light. It is putting light downward in spots that is lighting the roadway with a light pattern that goes across the roadway. So it can actually afford to be, as one of the comments is, we can tweak it down, so we're saving energy. But we're also conserving light. Where the high-pressure sodium lights that you see out there, they're casting light in a round circle, lighting the sky, lighting the side perimeters and the houses. So we're actually, with the design of an LED and the technology, you're actually able to conserve light as well as conserve energy.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, just, we'll get a quick.
Do you hear people saying it's more of a pinpoint in their eye, though, because of these than the sodium vapors?
The difference in the, the difference in the construction of this XSP is it actually contains fewer LEDs. So you don't see the spots of light like you did in the other one.
Okay.
This contains just five LEDs, where the other one contained either 10 or 20. And with the older one, you could actually see the pinpoints of light. This, I don't believe, is as noticeable.
Okay. I think Mr. McConerty had some comments as well.
Jean Huklaski, I'm from 1988, the first time around. I wanted to ask.
Just speaking to the microphone.
He mentioned 1,700 lumens, and it could go down to 1,500 lumens. Is that now, can that be done with the Cobra head? Well, I guess you didn't put a Cobra head at the Quissette lights. At the 4,000 Kelvin that you have at the Quissette Road, can that go down to the 1,500 lumens?
He's nodding his head, yes.
And what you have now on Quissette is 1,700? Is that right?
That is what I believe. And the direction I heard from the board is to get back out to the four lights on Quissette and notch them down to the lowest setting.
So that right now, they're not at the lowest level?
I believe there's one more notch they can go down.
They can go down, because I've driven along there several times now to see the difference. And it is, the color is fine, it's just a little bit overly bright, because that's a dark road and you have very few light poles. I mean, you have a lot of telephone poles, but they don't seem to have any lights on. And you're, so you're going from the bright lights to the sodium vapor, which is kind of.
Would, do you, would shielding help? That's one of the things that we were talking about?
Shielding is absolutely essential. The shielding would make a huge difference. The other thing I wanted to ask you, the Village Green has Cobra head lights, sodium vapor. Do they get changed? Are they part of your inventory?
I see nodding heads back here.
Heather?
Are they?
There's, there's all of the lights currently under the analysis that's been done by the Cape Light Compact includes all lights. If the town wants to exclude.
If you're doing 2,000, it might be.
2,200 lights. If the town wants to exclude those Admiral Hat compact fluorescents that are in these dark districts, you need to let us know.
Okay.
And that reduces it to.
Because you come into, you come into Falmouth and you see the sodium vapor around the green, and then you've got the Main Street lights, that are all the white lights. So they, I would think you'd want to check the coloring and, you know, the low lumens in that historic area.
Just so the boards are aware, I believe around the Town Common are the CFL lights, which are the ones that in our initial dialogue, we said we would exclude and replace at a later time at a higher cost.
All right.
Mike Fineran, Precinct 6. And I do recall that we were supposed to have the 3,500s as part of a demonstration, but wouldn't it make more sense to put all our choices, like, on one street or in one vicinity? So we could just drive up and down and see what each one is, rather than going to Seacoast and then trying to remember the difference between that and Gus Canty, and then going to Quissette and trying to remember the comparison in your head when you could have them all in them?
And that was mentioned.
Relatively close.
Thank you. Mr. McConerty?
Just wanted to make some comments, hopefully these will be closing comments, the night's getting long. I just, some things to take away from this past presentation is, I just wanted to confirm some of the comments. So Falmouth is the, will be the only Cape town that'll be looking at the 3,500, if that's what they choose?
That's correct.
And with the 3,500, there's a 40% savings, and with the 4,000, there's a 70% savings?
That's correct, just roughly.
And with the 3,500, they're not adjustable to a light intensity? And the 4,000s, they are adjustable down to the lowest of the lights?
They're not adjustable as far as field adjustable, but we could swap them out in a six-to-eight week cycle. That would be, you know, an ordering process. Again, the 3,500 is a special order fixture, so it will take time to procure that. And again, we're working with the industry, as folks said, the industry has changed, but this is the state of affairs that we work.
And the 30, so the 3,500 wouldn't be as versatile as the 4,000?
Correct.
And, okay, so with the 4,000s turned down into the lowest level and looking at a 3,500, I haven't seen the difference in seeing the lights. I haven't seen the difference in the lights if you're talking, you know, 500 lumens or what have you for the color light. I think what we initially had led to at the last meeting was, in the residential areas, we would use the 4,000 lumens at the lowest settings. And in the commercial areas, we'd use the 4,000 lumens at the highest setting.
Kelvins.
Kelvins, excuse me, kelvins, for the light, with the highest light intensity setting. So it would be, the streetlights throughout town would be uniform, they'd be the same streetlight, they'd be just at different levels. And as Kevin had mentioned, as a follow-up to the light installation, 60 days or 90 days following that, they'll be looking at comments for adjustments for the streetlights. It could be tough, because it would be in the middle of the summertime. Hopefully, we might be able to prolong that. It doesn't get darker until later. But there will also be adjustments on those lights. And as far as putting the lids on the lights, I'd say in the residential areas, it could be appropriate to put the lids on. The downtown areas, where you have the sidewalks and people moving on the lower sidewalks, you might want to think about the lids on those areas.
What would be the possibility of getting two or three of the 3,500s soon? I guess you said it was a 68-week special order. So it really is no chance for us to be able to see them in time to make a comparison to really make them a.
Benefit of that is, we could do some swapping around. In other words, two 3,500s were installed because of the demonstration phase. I could just locate them and swap those out for here. And we've got fixtures coming in every day for the communities that are in queue. So I'm feeling confident that literally within days, we could get what you requested, which was 3,500 installed, all the shields put on, the Quissette Road demos that were done. And then we get back together soon.
And put these near the, and put these, the 3,500s on Quissette?
Exactly.
Nearby?
Nearby the adjacent 4,000 to see the difference.
Okay, there is one.
And one other thing, turn down the Quissette as low as they can, so we could take a look at how that looks.
At the lowest level.
Okay.
Got my marching orders. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any last comments from the public?
Thank you. I read the report, the Siemens report that Catherine Love sent us from Peter Conaty. There is an attachment, there was tree, the Phase Four Tree Trimming List. And I got a little confused, because I think I did the, looked at the streets, and then, and I came up with hundreds of trees that need to be trimmed and realized, Eric told me that it was the number on the street, not the house number, rather than the tree. But is tree trimming is not part of the contract? Apparently, it's up to the town to trim the trees or to contract out for it. That's my understanding from what I read. Is the town prepared to?
I think Mr. McConerty can answer.
Do that kind of trimming? I mean, and is it as horrendous as I think? I mean, I just looked at Falmouth, every town, they do it for every town, boring, whatever.
I can speak to that.
Can you speak to that?
Please.
The, in the back of that report was a tree trimming schedule for all the different, for the different towns throughout the Cape. Falmouth is approximately two pages, and that, those pages were given to the Parks Department, and they were actually out there at this time doing the trimming of the trees. And I believe that those are the ones, those are the trees that need immediate, so that, for the bucket trucks and they can get up there to do the installations. And as time goes on, we'll continue to keep the streetlights, streetlights open.
Okay.
So at this time, the Parks Department is working on clearing those utility bulbs and the streetlights.
And just to summarize, so turn down the Quissette lights, add the shielding, get a couple of 3,500 Kelvin units out there so that they can be compared. Okay, so we're all in agreement?
To Heather's point, do we need clarity on the CFLs not being part of this, or?
It would be helpful if the board has a strong resolve right now.
After we see what these look like.
Yeah, let's, maybe we should wait till everything's up before we make that last decision. Okay, but we're all in agreement?
We do need to make that decision.
Yeah, yeah. But we're all in agreement on those three points? Okay, so no vote needed. Mr. Rentrha, one last comment?
Two things. Tom Rentrha Woods-Hall, John Waterbury suggested, on the ones in Quissette that are shielded, would you do two of them shielded and the two of them not, so we get a true comparison?
Yes.
And the second thing is, on these, I don't like these LED way fixtures much, but the idea that they can't represent this kind of savings is because you can't set them down to a low wattage. But certainly, they could be ordered at a lower wattage. And if they, it's the watts that is the energy used. So the savings means how much electricity they use. If it's a lower wattage bulb, it will be, it will be comparable to the Cobra head. Is that not true?
Do you want to address that? First, that's not a bad idea. Can we get a couple shielded and a couple without the shielding, so folks can see the difference?
Absolutely. And I just always work with Peter to tell me which ones. So just tell me which ones with, which ones not, we'll be out there tomorrow. The issue of the efficiency, or it's called efficacy, of the fixture is basically the amount of energy put in to the amount of light put out. The Ledways are not as efficient. It has nothing to do with the lumens or wattage. If you look at the two designed, the one on the left has more LEDs in it, the one on the right has fewer. So the design of the newer fixture is to be more efficient. And look at the two cut sheets, the Ledway versus the XSP, you'll see the efficacy is really significant. And, you know, as the board observed, you know, it has changed since I was last here, but it changed frankly to the good. I mean, we're really seeing an incredible improvement of efficiency that is way beyond what we had expected last year. So, thank you. I've got your instructions and.
Something new?
Yeah.
Because we really need to move on.
Just a quick suggestion, when you do this, maybe you should put the 3,500s on one side of the road and the other ones on the other, or some first, so people would know the order, so there wouldn't be any confusion.
If there's confusion, it's a good thing.
Exactly. Okay, I think we're good. We're ready to move on? Okay, I'm being asked, I'm being asked to take, we'll take a brief recess here, folks. We've been here for a while. We've been here for a while.[293.69]
State and local permitting, once we have enough of the design complete, we try to get that going as soon as possible. In order to meet the deadlines under the SRF and DEP program, we have to have a design submitted in October in accordance with the funding program. So we're pretty aggressive in getting the design done and get the permitting started because the state wants the permits in place when we submit in October. So it's a pretty aggressive schedule. Following DEP approval and SRF approval of the design, you would go to bid hopefully by the end of the year depending on their timeframe for review. And then construction hopefully in early 2015. Article 26 for town meeting for the construction phase and project management during construction. It's estimated at forty-six point five million. A little bit about where we're at. This is Long Pond. Existing facilities located down on this causeway between Long Pond and Groose Pond. Originally, you might remember from the feasibility study that a preliminary site was selected where Pumping Station Road meets Gifford Street. That site, as it turns out, is too small for the facilities and it would wipe out a very nice pine grove right at the entrance. It's bordered by some steep slopes to the parcel to the north, which make construction a little more difficult. Right at the entrance to the park. There's little or no buffer to the park, to the street. So we have recommended a parcel to the north. This parcel is, constructability wise, is very good. It's fairly flat. There's no wetlands on it. It provides access to the deepest water in the pond, which is, this works, right in this cove. Has, the parcel fronts that cove. It also has frontage on Gifford Street where our utilities will come from, gas, electric, our water main connection. So this parcel works very well and that's where we're looking at currently for our primary design layout. That's the quick explanation. Jennifer?
Any questions for Mr. O'Neill before we move on to the next?
I do have one quick question for you. If we're putting the site there, the pump station's down here. How do they?
We're looking at a new intake and a new raw water pump station here rather than run a long pipeline and rehab this old facility and pump all that distance. We're looking at a new intake.
We would abandon the current pump facility?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Jennifer Batit, the Finance Director. And I will go over the financing portion of this project. The, I'm going to give an overview of the whole capital plan because we want to look at the big picture and how this fits into our overall capital plan. But I will focus on the water treatment facility. So here are the financing recommendations for the water facility construction. The cost would be forty-six and a half million dollars. We've already voted the design last year and that has already been incorporated into our capital plan. And when we looked at this, we looked at raising water rates as a part of financing a portion of the construction. So the recommendation, and this is really kind of a big picture recommendation right now, is to raise a half of the construction costs on the water rate. And so the first principal and interest payment would be about a million two. And if we increase the minimum by thirty percent and then the excess charge by fifteen percent, that would raise the first half of the full construction of the principal and interest in that year. And also, when we raise the water revenue, we will actually reserve it. And what we'll do is, as you know, we're trying to get to, eventually get to a water enterprise fund. But we will reserve that revenue and smooth out some of the bonding so it will stay within that excess debt capacity. And I'll show you the graphs in a second. Because the remainder of the projects and the other projects, really the main goal is to keep everything within our debt drop-off and not to spike the tax levy. So whenever we fit in a project, we want to make sure that we fit it in and we plan it accordingly that goes in within the debt drop-off. And then I have an illustration with my charts. This would be financing scenario A. Now, I do have betterments up there because that's still a big portion of our other major capital program right now of the wastewater collection system. And so we haven't really decided how we would, how much we would, the percentage in betterments to pay for that cost. So I wanted to give you two different scenarios so you could look at the big picture. And so with the fifty percent betterment, as you can see, we always want to keep the debt at around ten point three. That's what it was in 2013, so we want to keep this line steady.
Jennifer, could you just, you might want to turn that microphone to you because I think it is directionally sensitive.
Okay, thank you. So we want to make sure that we always keep the debt within this white line right here, our existing debt. And as you can see, we're planning in 2014 and 2015, we've been able to accomplish that goal. Be bringing the budget to town meeting in about a month and a half in 2016. And then it does drop off a little bit. And we will be receiving water revenue at this point, so we'll reserve it. So when we get to 2021 and 2022, we can lower this a little bit. Now, remember, these are all the capital projects right now that we've actually discussed. I do have the senior center in here because we are looking at a feasibility study. So I just wanted to give you some idea of what it may look like. So these are all our capital projects. You do get a little bit of a spike here, but we can smooth that out no problem. And then, as you can see, in 2022, it just drops off dramatically. And with the seventy percent financing scenario B, the same, raising the water rates fifty percent of the capital costs, we accomplished that goal with the seventy percent betterment. You can see this definitely, you know, drops off. But we will be getting betterment revenue and water revenue and the same as on the first chart around here. And looking to reserve that. It's easier probably to reserve the water revenue than the betterment revenue, which is another discussion. But again, the goal is always to try to keep this bar right here. And then we can incorporate other projects and look at the capital facility plan. So that was really the, you know, recommendation to give you an idea what the whole capital facility plan would look like and how we incorporated the water treatment part into the capital plan. And it's really, those charts are updated from the presentation that I did give in December to, you know, just let you know that it, you know, this is a plan. It's a moving target. We're always adjusting it, bonding. We will be asking and getting approved for, you know, MWP AT bonding at two percent. It's all going out. My plan, the plans that I've put in here go out twenty years at the two percent for the water treatment.
Is the drop-off that you mentioned because of the betterments coming in and paying our debt? Or is it because our debt's being decreased?
Both.
Okay.
So when, what are the projected water rate increases? And as well as when do you expect to start doing the borrowing for this project, this year?
Good questions. Right here. When you look at the short-term interest right here, we'll start, we've been short-termining this because our debt drop-off capacity, we have that. This is our debt drop-off capacity right here. So what we've been doing, and especially in fourteen and fifteen, is we're borrowing short-term, but then we're paying it off. So we're not long-term borrowing to pay the interest. So in order to keep our debt, you know, level. And that really does give us the capacity. So this is all short-term. I don't, I probably won't have a first principal and interest payment until 2018, 2019. Because when we're embarking on these large projects, you really, you know, you want to bid out the project, short-term, look at your cash flow, really manage your cash flow within the project. You want to keep, the other thing you want to look at is look at interest rates. If you start seeing them go up, you might want to bond a portion of that project. So you're always kind of managing it. And that's why I say this is a moving target. It's just really a plan right now. But your first principal and interest payment wouldn't be due till 2018, 2019. And that would just be half of each of the projects. We wouldn't, you know, bond probably the forty-six million right away. One more caveat to that is when we're borrowing with the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust, they really tell us when we bond. So they'll give us some notice and say, your principal and interest payment will be due next year. But we have enough room in here that that plan will change. So if the principal and interest payment becomes due sooner, we just won't pay off some of the short-term. But again, it is a moving target, something always to keep our eye on.
Okay, so the follow-up though. When would you project that we would be increasing these water rates? Both the fifteen percent and the ready charge, I guess?
Probably, we did discuss that a little bit and I'll let Ray elaborate a little bit on that. When we actually increase them, it does take some time for them to come into effect when we actually bring in the revenue. But I would think that we'd stop bringing in the revenue in FY 2017 and FY 2018.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Just to answer that question now, the projected rate increase would be in 2016 in order to be able to anticipate it for the debt repayments. So that's about the time.
So we still have some time before we need to make those decisions about how the rate would be increased?
Yes, yes. And that, what Ms. Batit gave you was very preliminary. It was really just taking some numbers of thirty percent, fifteen percent across. But the selectmen always, you know, pick and choose exactly how it's to be implemented. So you'll have plans in front of you for that.
Any other questions? Is there any?
We could just pass out some documents first, please. Any chance we could just turn that off so I could go ahead?
It's an IQ test, right? We've had it four times today.
Good evening. Good evening. Chuck Martinson, I'm the Deputy Director of the Department of Marina and Environment. Thank you for having me be able to stand up and speak this evening. First, before I speak, I'd like to publicly thank my colleague Ray Jack for his tireless efforts for this community, particularly with pushing so hard on this project. I work a lot of evenings and oftentimes I'll drive by and I'll see Ray up there in the office on weekends with the lights on, you know, crunching final numbers. When I first started years ago, Ray explained to me then the need for a water filtration plant. I'm entirely in support of a new facility, which has long been needed. Mr. Jack is one of the most intelligent and driven people I've ever worked with. We're lucky to have Ray in our corner. Thank you, Mr. Jack, for your dedication and your leadership to this community. Moving forward with a new filtration plant, we need to look, we need to look at what principles should guide our efforts in deciding a new facility. The two paramount objectives I see, key to a new water filtration system, would be first, sustainable development, and second, stewardship of our lands, particularly in our watershed. With the Long Pond watershed, within the Long Pond watershed, there is an area in the southeast corner of the property, which was a former shooting range, dumping area, street sweeping sand disposal site, and used pavement dumping area. Strictly focusing on the shooting range, this area is within a few hundred yards of the surface water supply and is connected hydraulically at groundwater level. Last week, Ms. Gladfelter, Conservation Commission Chairwoman, Jennifer McKay, Conservation Administrator, Greg Frazier, our new MES Director, and I walked the former range area. This area largely departs from the United States Environmental Protection Agency's most recent best management practices for leaded outdoor shooting ranges. On a brief inspection, on our, on a brief inspection, spent lead bullets could be found near the surface of the range in the backstop, which is in close proximity to groundwater. A 2002 conservative estimate of three hundred thousand pistol rounds was given that were fired at this range not to include the United States Coast Guard Rifle Range, which is also in the area. And that was a town range that the Coast Guard used to fire rifles at. I'm joined tonight by Ms. Gladfelter, Ms. McKay, and Mr. Frazier. Unfortunately, we were brought into this process on February 10th, 2014. The process of site selection had been at completion well prior to our knowledge of this process, that this process was taking place. Certainly is troubling that I have likely the most amount of time in these woods of anyone in the town of Falmouth over the last ten years. Further, in recent years, I have worked closely with the United States Geological Survey and the Massachusetts Division of Fish and Wildlife to benchmark both geophysical and biological characteristics of Long Pond. We have provided geological, bathometric, total volume mapping calculations free to the community that otherwise would have been extremely costly. To date, many of our questions have not been answered. And I would like to see that these concerns are addressed prior to moving forward with any further on a site selection process. Tonight, we have been provided with many good reasons why financially, development of a second-generation growth pine forests in the town off Gifford Street, I call for a lack of better term. The pizza pie lot would make optimal choice financially. And again, that's this lot up here. What Tatum Howard has not explained to you tonight is why, under a sustainable model, taking into consideration stewardship of our watershed, why cleaning up the old shooting range in the dumping areas and placing water treatment in the footprint or nearby the footprint would not be feasible and an overwhelming good for our community. More precisely, under the initial scope of work, site design engineers in Mid-Over was contracted to survey the former range and dumping area. This portion of the contract was later removed and the scope of work never surveyed this area. The value of cleaning up one contaminated property and then placing a larger fenced infiltration plant area there would seem to take into greater consideration long-term sustainability and stewardship to our watershed, which consists of our woodlands. From a financial standpoint, we would be managing liability by removing long-term threats to our watershed, namely lead, street sweeping piles, asphalt piles, and other concerns. Facing an ever-increasing demand on our water resources coupled with a threat of this magnitude neighboring Long Pond, we have a long-term recipe for ruin. I think, I'm thinking of water resources for our children and our grandchildren, not just our generation. In my opinion, due diligence needs to be extended beyond mere financial considerations. My message tonight is that our community is guided by more than just bottom line. Conserving areas of highly functioning, healthy ecological systems around our water supply, such as the second-generation growth pine forests, protect our watershed in a number of ways. Wholesome, long-term, sustainable water solutions are what is needed by this town. By using the former footprint or nearby area of the dumping area in the shooting range, we will be mutually saving green space in our town and addressing a pollution issue at once. Surveying land for, surveying this land for redevelopment, this already developed property for water infrastructure resources would not be a novel use of a shooting range on Cape Cod. For example, I pointed the town of Wellfleet, who in 2008 removed bullets and led at a closed shooting range in their town prior to placing nearby municipal drinking water infrastructure. They were faced with similar circumstances and chose to clean the area up and use the site. Quoting Select Chairperson Wild's BB, "We knew we had to clean it up." Just want to point out, I only have a few more moments up here, but I just want to point out, this is the area that was, the area that was selected. And the date down there is in December 2013 to cite the area. This area right here is the rifle range. It's a conservative estimate of three hundred thousand rounds that were shot at that range. So over here, I'm sorry, that's a pistol range. There's a photograph of that in your packet. Over here is the rifle range, which is the area where the Coast Guard and others did do some shooting in that area for a few years. These red piles are street sweeping piles. And this long piece here is approximately six hundred feet of ground up to the bottom. The calculations of how big that is are on your, on your, on your handouts. In closing, we are all very excited about the prospect of moving forward with a new filtration system. I look forward to working alongside Tatum and Howard to develop additional options while providing the consultant firm with information which could assist in this process. Most importantly, I look forward to standing alongside Ray Jack in a future town meeting in full unwavering support of a water filtration plant that we can, without reservation, proudly pass along for generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Could you, in your map, I trust you know the park very well. It had been mentioned there was a very important clump of pine trees that we're going to be avoiding by not using, and you're discussing.
Sure, we happen to show that.
And that wasn't, I think it grew, it was knocked down. I think it was closer to the...
There was an initial, there was an area that was pointed out to initially during that presentation.
Right.
And I don't want to speak for anyone.
Considerably to the south.
There was a, there is a area, to the south of there, which was, which is also a pine area. It's a much younger forest. Many people in Falmouth might remember that in Hurricane Bob, we had wind shear there. Majority of trees were knocked down. Those trees in that area are approximately, well, twenty years old. It was when Hurricane Bob was. The trees up in that area, up top in this area, are significantly older than that. They're huge.
And what I'm trying to also remember about the contours is right north of those trees, it does, it's fairly sheer, but it then goes down across from the development area. It is almost level to the area that this is.
If you were to look at the range, in the area above the range, the upland above the range, it's almost similar to like a table going down. On each side of the range, the slope increases. So it'll be flat across the top, or almost flat. And then the slope increases as you go down. It was essentially mined out. So there is, there is some pockets of wetland that are in there. But there is significant land beyond it, to the north of it, and on the other side of it, on this side. And then certainly within the range proper for settling pools.
Don't we continue to harvest trees in this forest? The best of my knowledge, I remember going by there and I remember not talking about where the range is, where the proposed site is. That within that, in the years, in past years?
There has been thinning to make the forest more healthier, to, in that area, to actually increase the growth in that area. The, without, in just too far particulars I am, the only, at this point, the only known harvesting that I'm aware of is I believe there were a handful of trees that were sold out of there for ships, for mass, for ships that were sold to the town, you know, sold by the town. They were selected because they were very straight. But as far as large-scale kind of harvesting, I know that there's been some cuts in there that have been kind of more ecologically based.
As a follow-up, I know we have a sawmill, town-owned sawmill. Where are we harvesting that wood from?
I believe a lot of those trees that were used in the sawmill over the years were a lot of trees that were actually knocked down. There is a tremendous amount of trees that are knocked down in the forest each year. We clear approximately, you know, a hundred or so a year out of the way after a given storm. Not to say that some hadn't been harvested, say, out of Goodwill Park or other areas. It is part of that management plan. Part of a healthy forest management plan is releasing canopy and removing some overgrowth.
Any other questions? I do, obviously, the lead is of concern, but I know that that's a rather complex and lengthy process, I think, to address that particular issue. This is news to me, actually. I didn't realize there was once a shooting range there. But I guess one of my questions is, is this something that the town has any, do we have any plans for this? Or is this news to a lot of us where we're, is this something that we're going to have to come back and take a look at? I do know, from my own experience, my wife is a real estate broker and sometimes when you deal with contaminants in soil, that there's a process, state and federally, where it's actually very comprehensive testing has to be done first before you can utilize a site. And I'm wondering if, obviously, we're going to want to clean this up, but I'm wondering if that process could significantly slow down the process of siting and building the water treatment plant. And I don't know whether Mr. Jack could answer this question or the town manager's office. Do we want to come back and have a discussion on this?
I'll certainly take a crack at it and I'd welcome Ray's comment. Mr. Chairman, I just want to note, Mr. Martinson brought this to my attention for the first time very late last week, anecdotally as part of another meeting. I did not anticipate it would be raised this evening. But seeing that it has been, I want to state the obvious. And that is that, you know, in this town, we're good stewards. And having a dated shooting range with some potential lead contamination in the watershed of Long Pond is something that as good stewards need to address. And thankfully, as part of this overall planning process, as you've seen from Mr. O'Neill's presentation from Tatum and Howard, we're at the thirty percent level on this planning. We have not zeroed in on a final site. There is one that we have some anticipation on. But as Mr. Jack and others are aware, we have some land, we have some deed-related issues that are having to be explored prior to being able to lock down on any one site. So the site could be in this pizza pie shape. It could be further south. There could be some movement here. And I expect that that may well occur. Because again, we're in the thirty percent process here. And what we want to do is make a good decision. So that determination still lies ahead. But what is not debatable is whether we're going to take care of a potentially contaminated area, have the proper analysis done, and do the right thing in the time that we have, which lies ahead. Which is our responsibility, it seems to me, in any case. Because irrespective of a potential new water treatment plant, this is within the watershed of Long Pond. And it's something that we need to look at addressing. And in that regard, I think it's important to have raised it. And I think the time allows for an appropriately thoughtful and cautious and deliberative analysis of how to deal with it. But I have no doubt that we can deal with it and do it appropriately. And within the context of a major development like this, it is a, the responsible thing to do in a small, very small percentage of the total budget at, in my, in my estimate. As, I don't pretend to be a professional engineer in that regard. But that is how I would view it. And I'd welcome Ray Jack's comments, if Ray would care to make any as well.
No, I really think that Mr. Souza summed it up very, very well. It's, the range is an old range. The area that it's in is an old gravel pit that had been excavated pretty much down to the water table level. So from a site perspective, our consultants had evaluated this site and it would be very expensive to build a plant on that site. But given the issues of the fact that it is the old stumped up, that's how it's been known as in the past. Yeah, it is something that the town ultimately has to deal with. There will be obviously costs associated with any final remediation of the area. But to incur the study at this time would be very, very doable. So I would agree.
This isn't a question. This is just a statement that I appreciate Chuck bringing this to our attention. I've ridden by there, I've seen the signs, I've never gone down in there, I've seen the shooting range. It's an area we may need to look at as a community to, you know, rehabilitate because it does abut our surface water supply. However, we have to, as a, as a leadership group in this community, have to make some valued judgments. We have...
We have a drinking water problem in this community. We know that this community was shut down several years ago. We had a boil water order that allowed for us not to be able to use our surface water supply. We know we're over treating our current water from this facility. So I think we're in the midst or on the verge, as a community, of an area where we have to take some action and action soon. I think that both of these issues need to be on parallel tracks. I appreciate the fact that this was brought up to our attention tonight. We need to look at the site, but that needs to be separate from this particular issue. We may be able to do some remedial action there, clean it. I'm not, you know, an environmental consultant, nor do I try to play one here on television, but that's an area where we, I'm glad we brought it to our attention. We need to look at it, but we also need to make sure that people have drinkable water in this community in the very near future. I want to remind folks, we have clean water right now, but we have what we call suspended solids in those, that water, and that's one of the things we're going to take out of this. We need to move forward with that. And I know we're not at a definitive site right now, but we need to find a site, we need to find one that can provide drinkable water in this community. We can do all we want, in my mind, for wastewater, but if you can't drink it, you can't pee it. And the bottom line is, we need to make sure that we have water that you can drink. So I appreciate bringing it forward, and I think we need to start looking at this site to potentially clean it up, but I don't think that should stop us looking at a site at the pond to be able to put, site a sewer, I mean, a water treatment facility. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Martinson. Appreciate that. As far as action, I don't think we need to take any action at this point with regards to the water filtration plant. We've got the article and the warrant.
I'll just report to the board.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, the next item on our agenda is the discussion of the Little Pond Sewer Betterment allocation. And we have the members of the Water Quality Management Committee here for this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, my note on this topic, I, we shared with the board on your packet, the handout that you had received and was briefly discussed by the Water Quality Management Committee regarding the 1984 proposal for betterment assessments and the unit method for doing so. And of course, you know, the board received that report. I bring it up to your attention a second time, not because you need to make a decision this evening, you do not. However, I thought, my understanding is the board might like to have some discussion as to your views on the appropriateness of applying this, given that the circumstances in the 30 years ensuing may be somewhat different in terms of commercial residential mix and that type of thing. So I wanted to underscore that all the realm of decisions remain ahead for the board, but you may want to make some comments on this at the present time to make certain that there's no confusion with the public.
Mr. Murphy?
I was not at the meeting that this was presented to the board. I have tried to get up to speed. I looked at the tape. I had an opportunity to meet with the chairman of the committee. I think that we need to move forward, of course, at town meeting, and give town meeting a direction from this board in regard to betterments, to be able to support our wastewater plan. However, I do believe that this board, in going forward, needs to take a vote to set aside the 1984 betterment unit methodology of assessments and develop a new and updated methodology of assessments. I think this will only serve to confuse and inhibit the process as it moves forward. I do know that we do need to come up with a method to design and to be able to implement the unit methodology, but this 1984 plan, and if I can give some ideas and some ideals of how, if we were to apply this today, I can also say that it has not been uniformly applied since 1984. Given illustration in New Silver Beach, it was not applied. So it was not, in other words, the very limited commercial aspect over there was not, this was not applied for that. I can say, you know, folks who know me, I know that I'm in the restaurant business. This particular methodology would provide 10 seats for one betterment. This outdated, and I say, it is an idea and a concept that you need to move forward with, but we need to be fair and consistent as we move forward. This provides for 10 seats. Any coffee shop in this community has to have a minimum flow of 40 seats by the Board of Health for, to be licensed as a fast food or coffee shop. That's what the requirement is, I believe, of the Board of Health. So that would provide four betterments for one of those shops. A 70-seat restaurant would have seven betterments, based on this methodology, the 1984 outdated methodology. That would rise to the amount, more than some of these folks paid for their properties or their, never mind the business, but for the facilities. So I'm just using that one specific aspect of this methodology. For me to be able to support moving on, I need to know that we can set this 1984 methodology aside, and we will develop a new methodology as we move forward. So I'd make a motion that we set aside, before we set up betterments, that we set aside the 1984 methodology, and that the board and/or the professional staff work to come out, come up with a new methodology to assess the unit assessments. So that is a motion I make.
Can I have one second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do you want to hear from the Water Quality Management Committee? Do you folks have an opinion on this, or?
Virginia Valiella, Precinct 5. When we made the presentation, we noted in our presentation that you might want to review this policy. We stated that we used it as a tool, and that's because it existed, and it has not been rescinded. And you need to figure out the sewer equivalent units by some method. New Silver Beach was mentioned earlier, that there were either so few or none commercial properties in New Silver Beach, that the math was really fairly easy. Total project divided by number of parcels gives you what the likely sewer equivalent unit would be. But in the case of the New Silver Beach sewer service area, 88% of the area is residential, and you do have some empty lots, and you do have some apartments, but there is more commercial, as Mr. Murphy noted, and there are restaurants there. So we would be happy to work with you if that helps you, and we see no problem in reviewing the policy. It doesn't, decision, no decision is needed on the policy tonight in order to discuss the matter of the betterment percentages.
Thank you.
The number of units will change, what the dollar figure per unit is going to be based on our 50% or 70%.
That's correct.
If we want to aim for a $500 thing, we can't do that without a formula, but we can get a range.
Right. You can get a range. These are all estimates and working numbers. We're starting with our maximum dollar amount, 41 million for the collection system. By the time we actually get it designed, there's nearly $6 million in contingency in that 41 million. It may be a lower number.
Of course, we all know that in 1984, when this formula was developed, the town looked a lot different than in terms of the number of restaurants and the number of motels and multifamily dwellings and all of that. And I know in talking with Virginia about this, that the committee, working with SEU Carpus, actually has a listing of every single property, and I would like to see that list, to see exactly what, where are those restaurants, and how many are there, and how many have more than 10 seats, how many have 70 seats, how many nursing homes are there, you know, how many businesses are there, how many condominiums are there, so that we actually can take a look at with the breakdown that creates this, the result of the SEUs. What is causing these SEUs? And how many people, and how many properties in this whole list are actually having more than one SEU? And who are they? And what do they represent? I think it would be, I agree with you, and I agree with your motion in setting it aside for now, but I think we need to get some facts about it so we know what we're looking at.
Right. And I wholeheartedly agree with you, but the way this is written currently, it's unworkable.
I agree.
And I can use some examples if I may. The mall would pay less based on this than a restaurant, because the only restaurant in the mall currently is Subway, besides the theater. So a restaurant could conceivably, based on this, pay more than what the entire mall would pay. So that's just an illustration. The other illustration that I want to use, when this was put in in 1984, we roughly had two restaurants on Main Street. Those properties paid their betterment. Well, guess what's happened on Main Street since 1984? So does a place, a restaurant, say, for the sake of doing a betterment, "I'm going to become a storefront for you for, you know, six months." And then right after the betterment success, "Okay, I'm going to go back to be in a restaurant." So we need to come up with a definitive plan. And what's going to be fair here is going to be fair to everyone. It's roughly about 280 SEUs that I've been told that we need to divide up. So we need to find out how to divide those up in a fair and equitable way. It represents about 1/8 of the entire sewer area. So again, my motion is that we just not confuse the situation in that we rescind this 84 policy and the board work with the professional staff, maybe even bring in some of those folks over there, because I'm sure the mall would understand it's not fair for them to only pay a certain percentage as well. So that would, then again, I'm going to follow in that motion.
I agree with the idea of setting this aside, but to Ms. Flynn's point, and I do think we need to have something, and I understand where you're coming from in terms of the mall, but we don't want to confuse size versus use. And one of the questions that I have is, you know, how much water, how much wastewater does a restaurant create versus, say, Walmart? You know, Walmart has a couple of bathrooms that serves, I don't know what kind of use they get out of those bathrooms, obviously, but a restaurant, obviously, is going to have more patrons using the restaurants, the restrooms more frequently. There's going to be more use of the wastewater system, I would suspect. And so I think we need to get some ideas to the usage, and this may be, I think you're right, it's probably overly simplistic, and it does sound to be oppressive, I guess would be the word that I would think of. A 70-seat restaurant would require seven betterments, and if a betterment is, I mean, even if we were to charge, say, $25,000 for a betterment, I mean, that's a sizable chunk of money, even for a restaurant.
Right. And if I can use some other examples, that's not taken into account. And the reason I know this is from a personal experience, on the property where my restaurant is located in Woods Hole, there's a dentist's office there. My landlord billed me out, wanted me to pay the bulk of the water bill. Well, I meter internally my own water. Well, guess what? You go to dentist, that water that, you know, it goes around that little thing? And he, you know, he goes, "Go ahead and spit in that." Some of them have a filtration system, but some of them don't. It's kind of like an ice cream shop, where they got that stream of water that's going in. That's water that's running. So you're right, it has to be done based off of water consumption.
There's a lot of rinsing and spitting going on there.
Well, I mean, it's just running all the time. So I'm just using those as an example, that we have to look at this and base it on a different criteria than what we're coming with.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to set this aside, and obviously, the Water Quality Management Committee is already looking at this, so I don't think we need any additional aspects to the motion. Any further discussion? Any feedback from the public about this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. Part of this discussion, we needed also to have, my understanding was, we needed to have some discussion about how the betterment was going to be allocated in preparation for town meeting, and I do believe that's still the case. Is it not?
Yes, that will come up in your recommendations, Mr. Chairman, on the next item on the agenda, subject to the pleasure of the board.
Okay. So we can move on to that agenda item, and we'll take that up when we get there. All right, so we're all set with this. Next item on the agenda is to vote the April 2014 Town Meeting Article Recommendations. This is for, we have the annual, I believe we also have the special in here, correct?
Yep.
We do, we have the special in here as well. All right, so we all have the same thing here. So on the first page then, we have Article 13, which is recommended.
Walk you through these.
If you wouldn't mind, actually, it may make it a little easier for us.
Yeah, Article 13 and 15 were the two special revenue accounts that were created for the stabilization fund and for the water reserve account. Those were both adopted by the Finance Committee, just forwarded, recommended on at your last meeting. So they'll have the main motion on that. The next article relates to the high school audit, which was a request of the town, and this reflects the selectman's vote of indefinite postponement with an explanation, which I think reflects the discussion of the board.
We didn't actually vote any of these, so do we actually need to vote Article 13's recommendation?
You do not. That's a Finance Committee recommendation.
Okay.
We took some of these up, and just for clarification, several of the items this board took up because they're a major policy discussion items for the town.
But Article 22, we will actually have to vote on.
Yes. In fact, the Finance Committee has already voted on that one, and I believe adopted the recommendation that is below, which is consistent with the board's vote last week.
Questions, comments, motions?
So we're going to vote on Article 22?
We need to vote every recommendation here, every explanation.
Recommendation indefinite postponement with explanation is given.
I'll second that.
Motion second for the recommendation and explanation on Article 22. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will vote in opposition, so it's four to one. Article 24.
Article 24 is the all-purpose community athletic field, and the board had asked for a promotion and an explanation both ways. Depending on which way you go, I have some minor editing to make to either one, but they do provide a positive recommendation with an explanation and indefinite postponement recommendation with an explanation. I'm happy to read them if that helps you, but you've got them before you.
I'm going to make a motion for recommendation. I think that there's been a lot of community action on this. I think that a lot of people have been working very hard. I think they've been, they have raised some money, and sometimes, and Virginia will remember it from years past, many times we used to say, "Town meeting needs to vote on this." You know, this is, this is, because it is something that really, that has benefit to many, many people in the community, and that this would be the type of article that I think we should move it forward so that town meeting can vote on it.
Do we have a second?
I just mean, they can't, if it's not.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a second.
Just for clarification, the Finance Committee has adopted indefinite postponement. This is a financial article. The Finance Committee will have the main motion on this. This is a question whether the board intends to make an ultimate policy advisory to the town meeting. You can take up what you want to place, your own positive main motion on the floor, as you can be inquired to town meeting.
That's why I made the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Murphy?
I do have a couple of questions. Number one is, and I'm trying to look at this a little bit, have Number one is, and I'm trying to look at this a little bit, have we a final number yet on this? Number one. You know, I'm not big on anything unless you know what you're talking about and where you're moving forward. So do we have a final number? I know that I've talked to some folks about maintenance and things of that nature, but my question is, do we have a final number back yet on this, on this motion? So can I ask that through you?
I'm actually not.
Okay, well, maybe let me ask the professional staff.
No, they've gone out to bid. The desire of the committee that's in place was to seek bids in advance of town meeting so they would know what the number was. Those bids are not in yet, I'm aware of.
So then the next question, if I can, through you, the professional staff.
Very briefly, I just want everyone to understand, Mr. Dufferty did ask if he could speak this evening, and I declined him that opportunity, because I want everyone to understand, there are a number of petitioner's articles here on the warrant.
And I appreciate that.
And I don't want to give everybody another bite at the apple without giving everybody another bite at the apple. They've all made their presentations, and so at this point, it's up to the board to make a decision.
So, but I can ask the professional staff.
Yes, yes.
The funding sources for this? Is this going to the ballot, or is this just the town meeting to funds to be used?
The plan, as recommended by the ad hoc, by the committee, this is a petitioner's article, so you do not have a financial plan presented by town staff. That's my understanding, that the recommendation of this, and you've heard the presentation, is for a capital exclusion for the largest share of funding. They have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in community preservation funds committed, but not yet available unless there's a full project moving forward, and a grant of five-hundred thousand dollars from the Fama third rate.
So it would go to the ballot?
It would go to the ballot. Sorry.
It would actually come back to us first.
Right, 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 right. And is that a two-thirds vote at town meeting, or fifty percent vote at town meeting?
I think it's fifty percent, because it's a simple, it would require town meeting to approve the override, and that would then get placed on the May, on ballot.
All right.
I'd like to talk about your decision not to have Mr. Dufferty speak to us, because he has been here all evening, and I really would like to hear it.
But if we afford Mr. Dufferty that opportunity, then...
Well, if there's anyone else here that wants to do that, I think that's fine.
But we've not allowed the other petitioners to do so, so I'm not going to allow Mr. Dufferty to do so, and I explained that to him. If we had advertised this and...
Don't we have a say in who we'd like to hear from?
We've already heard from them.
This evening.
I'm going to exercise my authority as chair in this situation, and I apologize if that offends any member of the board, but the petitioners all have an equal right to speak to this board and to petition this board equally. And if we allow Mr. Dufferty another opportunity, then we're denying the other petitioners that opportunity to make their case. Everyone was given the opportunity to make a case to the board and to argue that we should support these petitioner's articles. It is now up to the board to make decisions accordingly. If there's not enough information available to us at this time to make a decision, then that should affect how we make that decision. It's that simple.
Can I provide maybe some help to the board? This will have a recommendation, is already voted by the Finance Committee. You have until town meeting to determine what main motion you want to put on the board, put on the floor of town meeting. If the board's prepared tonight to take a policy vote, have its intent to place a positive main motion on town meeting floor, I think you can limit your discussion to that. There's already a recommendation, the Finance Committee's recommended indefinite postponement. That will be on the town meeting warrant, and this board really is discussing whether it wants to take a position that's different from the Finance Committee.
I would find it very hard, I know a lot of work has been put into this project, but to go against our long-range capital plan and going, and allowing people to come forward with their own little pet projects that aren't a part of our ten, fifteen, twenty-year capital plan, I just don't think is the right way for us to run the town. And I would find it hard to support it for that reason.
I would just say, on that, on that point, that sometimes things come up, and they don't fit into the right category at the right time. But sometimes you have to take a look at them and see where the community support is, and whether or not it is the right time to move it, even though it may not be set up in the scheme of things. I mean, sometimes those things happen.
Right.
And I just think that, you know, we don't have to be rigid in everything we do, we can be flexible.
I agree.
And, but it's, again, and maybe we don't want to decide this tonight, maybe we want to wait a couple of more weeks until we get more information before we make our recommendation to town meeting.
I guess my point is that it was not part of our long-range plan, and I don't think this is the right time. So in some ways, it's both pieces.
But that's, well, that's your opinion, and that's fine.
It's both pieces for me.
Kevin, you have something else?
I have two points, and I wholeheartedly agree with you, Mr. Chairman, and I forgot about what we were doing this evening. We have never taken comment tonight. We make recommendations, and I support that, and I forgot about that, and I apologize.
That's right.
The issue is, Mrs. Flynn, I could go along with what you're saying on this motion, but not with the explanation we have written.
Then I'm going to withdraw my motion and ask that it come back at a meeting just prior to town meeting.
No, I don't want to make a recommendation before, you know, if it's going to be in the book, it's going to be in the book. I prefer to make a recommendation tonight, but the recommendation would not be this. The recommendation would be merely that the board of selectmen would move this merely for town meeting to be able to voice their opinion on this and understand that it does not fit into the town's capital plan, because that's exactly what it should say. But the town, the board of selectmen would move this forward for town meeting to have their say.
Supports the idea of this going to town meeting.
Going to town meeting.
To town meeting vote.
Okay, but just so everyone understands.
Follow the drift of the research.
Whether, whether we, whether we recommend this or not to town meeting, town meeting's going to have a voice in it, they're going to vote on it, yes or no. So what this constitutes is whether we are willing to support this article and lend our support to it, lend our voice to it. Obviously, it's not something that we will, if we choose to put a positive motion on the floor, or if we choose to support the petitioners putting a positive motion on the floor, we can certainly do that. But we have to make a recommendation this evening, and regardless of the recommendation that we make, it is still going to be on town meeting, and it's still going to be voted, and I'm sure Mr. Dufferty is going to put a positive motion on the floor in order to argue that it should be passed. So let's make sure that we're, understand that we have to make a recommendation one way or the other, and let's not try to confuse this too much. Either we're going to recommend it, or we're not. Let's not have a muddled answer here, let's let town meeting know what we feel about this.
Well, I don't really think it's a muddled answer, but I think that, that we are the leaders of the town, and if we believe that town meeting should have the opportunity to hear a positive motion on this, so that, so that they don't come up with indefinite postponement, and then somebody else, either from the group or some other town meeting member, has to put a positive motion on, that we are asking, we think that this is a project that is very important to the community, and they need the opportunity to weigh in on it, and that's why we are making a positive motion. If that's what the board, that's what Kevin is suggesting, that that's how we, that's how we phrase our recommendation, that we think it's very important that town meeting have the opportunity to discuss this, to weigh in on it, and that if town meeting decides and it goes on the ballot, and then we, then if town meeting votes to put it on the ballot, obviously, then we have to take it up for ballot questions. But I think that's a reasonable explanation.
I want to reinforce the process a little bit. The board invites all petitioners in to come and speak with you. This petition article happens to be a financial article, and the main motion and what's printed in the warrant will be the recommendation of the Finance Committee with the Finance Committee's explanation. What you're voting tonight is simply a policy guidance, which, which the all-purpose field committee can, can use to continue its work, knowing that the selectmen will need to place a positive motion on the floor. But you will not do that until you get to the floor of town meeting. You certainly can communicate at precinct meetings, and we'll be guided by that vote in our actions from this point forward. But the motion that will be printed in the warrant will be indefinite postponement with a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
But could we not add to the warrant that the selectmen will be making a positive motion on the article?
It would be the first time I've seen it.
Let me also share some information with you, because I've, it's come to my attention, and one of the concerns that I have about this, and I'm not prepared to support this at this time, and hopefully, the committee that's bringing this forth can perhaps provide a better explanation at town meeting. But one of the things that I've come to understand is that these fields have an expected lifetime, and that they are somewhere between eight and twelve years. And the replacement cost for the field is approximately a million dollars, or somewhere in the range of seven hundred to one-point-something million dollars. So what we're looking at here, if you look at the law of averages, is a field that may be good for ten years, and after ten years is going to need to be replaced at the cost of a million dollars. Now, with that in mind, I'm not prepared to support this project, because I'm sitting here trying to figure out where we're going to get a hundred thousand dollars a year for the next ten years to make sure that if this is built, that there's going to be money to replace it when it wears out. And the other side of my brain is looking at this and saying, you know what, for a million dollars, for a hundred grand a year, how many turf fields, or not turf fields, but how many grass fields can we create in this community? There's a lot of questions here that I have about the viability of this project, notwithstanding the fact that, and I understand it's been on the capital plan for many years, and it keeps sort of getting pushed off to the side, but the reality is, is right now it doesn't fit into our plan. We have a water plant that's all going to be on the ballot, we have a sewer plant that's going to be on the ballot, we obviously have the senior center, which wants to be on the ballot as soon as possible, and now all of a sudden, we've got this one, which is showing up, and it's not being supported by the Finance Committee. It hasn't been supported by the overall plan that we have. And while I understand there's a movement and a desire to get it done sooner than later, I really think that there's some questions and some concerns here that need to be addressed. I don't think it'd be advisable for the board to be supporting it at this time. And so I think if we're going to make even an advisory vote, it should be indefinite postponement, and we should not bring to town meeting a confusing message where the Finance Committee is saying one thing and we're saying another. That's my two cents.
Jennifer, have something to say?
I just wanted to add with just the process of the Finance Committee, all financial articles under the charter, even petition articles, fall under the purview of the Finance Committee, and they make the recommendation to town meeting, and then they have the explanation. And that's really what's been written in the charter and the book says, the book is written, you know, goes forward with Finance Committee. And I've spoken to the Chair of the Finance Committee regarding this, we've had several conversations, because, you know, the board does weigh in, but I just wanted to, you know, we would move forward with the Finance Committee, I mean, they're pretty adamant about that, that it's their financial article, their recommendation and their explanation. But I just wanted to, you know, just mention that, that we've had, we've discussed this a lot.
The charter says that we have to make a recommendation on petitioner's articles also.
On petitioner's articles, yes.
I, that's what I was going to say. I don't think it does. I think a recommendation has to be made.
I don't think so either.
I don't want to confuse the situation. I don't, I would much prefer not to give it a negative recommendation, just we do nothing on this article.
Well, you know, I think Jennifer's right, in the sense that we have never made recommendations on financial articles before, that I can remember, no matter whether they came from departments or whether they came from petitioners. I just don't ever remember, but...
You happen to be pulling up the charter, would you, Mr.?
Okay, why don't we skip over this article, come back to it then, if he's going to look at the charter here, what we're doing there?
All right, so we'll table Article twenty-four, if there's no objection.
That's not wrong.
All right, Article twenty-seven.
Article twenty-seven is the item related to betterments. There's a positive recommendation, which includes a range for the board's discussion. The board recommends the town endorse a betterment apportionment to the abutting property owners of no less than fifty percent and no more than seventy percent. The remaining thirty to fifty percent of the apportioned cost will be funded by the town if authorized by the voters at the May twenty-fourteen election. And there's an explanation that goes with that.
A question. So is this, is this recommendation suggests that we give a range and not do an actual percentage?
Correct, because you do not need to lock down on a percentage as yet. But it's consistent with the range, which the Water Quality Management Committee suggested, and it also gives the board the full range of options going forward in the event that anything unforeseen may arise, rather than lock you into a percentage, absolutely.
Well, I was thinking, and I've been thinking about this too, and I'm looking back at, well, I was around in the eighties, but I wasn't paying too much attention, I don't think, even though the sewer wars were all around me. But I do remember very well the Silver Beach one. And I also remember the discussion at town meeting about the betterment. And the town meeting knew that they could change it, too. And it was, what, seventy, seventy, thirty? So my feeling is that if we decide on a number, it should be seventy, because I think, because it's reasonable, it's, it's what we have done in the past, it puts, it gives the, a benefit to the, to the homeowner, and it also, you know, is appropriate for the town. But it doesn't mean that we couldn't change it to fifty-fifty at a later time. But it would be pretty awful if we decided to go fifty, and then for some unknown reason, we had to up it to sixty or seventy after we did that, and you just don't know. That's why I say start with seventy. People can start thinking about what it means to them if the betterment were seventy. And if for some reason we could reduce it, then that's a bonus, as opposed to trying to do it in the reverse fashion.
Mrs. Flynn, I agree, wholeheartedly with you. I think this is an issue that we need to put on our big-boy pants and make a decision on, because those folks over there want to know those type of scenarios. The idea, we don't have to decide tonight whether we're going to do it over twenty years or thirty years, and that provides the flexibility that might come about in the cost of what a betterment might be. Another issue is, if we don't go seventy, I know there's folks out there that had a seventy percent betterment, for the lack of a better term, this project could be held up like a Mr. Healey held up New Silver Beach. We want to be fair and consistent, because we want to see this project move forward and have some legs to it. So I think the seventy is an important number, and I think we also have to keep in mind, this is just for the collection system. My research has been able to show me that there's roughly eight to ten million dollars of additional costs at this town that taxpayers themselves have buried, and I hope, I will hope, that we can come up with what the actual betterment would have been had we taken the whole project, meaning all of the engineering work, all of the design that we've done and everything up until now, to show folks, even though we're saying it's seventy percent, it's really not seventy percent. It's a lot less than that.
Seventy percent of the total.
Seventy percent of only the collection system. It's only the collection system. It's not the pump stations, it's not, you know, the improvements we've done at the plant and things of that nature. So I think that's important.
And town meeting members, as I remember, and it doesn't mean, we have a lot of new town meeting members, they're very different, but their, their focus was really on, we want to do something to really help the people who are, who are going to be involved in this, who are going to have to pay for it, but nevertheless, it, it's still, they are the ones that are going to benefit from it.
And I agree with Mr. Murphy that for us to take a firm action, choose a number, is the right way for us to go. And the property values that are being increased because of what they, by right now, are going to be able to expand their house, for some of them, by one or two bedrooms, because their lots are so small, they weren't able to maintain any kind of a separate system, I think is going to outweigh it. And then with also the concern about the equivalent units, it may, they'll see what the number is, but it's probably going to, they're not going to get more equivalent units. It's going to be a reduction from what the night-day port plan was. So I think that will also be a way of reducing the cost.
Well, and it was touched on as well, but I think the, and I agree, that we should probably go with the seventy-thirty split, where the town is responsible for the thirty percent, and the, the individual units that are connected to that distribution system are responsible for the seventy percent number. It's defensible. We've done it before, and I think for consistency's sake, it's, it may be the only way to go, because any other number, it's going to be very difficult for us to justify how we came up with a different number when we've already started down that path, so. Let's, no comments from the public, please. All right, so do we want to approve the wording as presented, just to make sure it specifies the thirty-seventy percent? Town manager's office make those necessary changes?
Certainly.
Do we need a motion, or we need a motion to do that?
Yes, please. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Article twenty-nine.
Remove Article twenty-nine as presented here.
Okay. Motion and a second for Article twenty-nine as presented here to us. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? And the special town meeting, Article one.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, this is one that you have not seen before. We were of the understanding that the planning board is taking this article up, but they have not.
Oh.
And it's not on the agenda tomorrow evening. It relates to the changes in the historic commission and the code of Falmouth related to the demolition delay bylaw, and the staff recommendation is indefinite postponement. The planning board did take the matter up and recommended some language changes to the historical commission, but those have not been adopted. So our recommendation is that the selectmen invite the historical commission prior to town meeting and just review that with them in the hopes of having a positive motion for town meeting.
I agree with that, and I agree with talking to them, because I don't really agree with giving a waiver. I mean, to me, the, the whole demolition delay is, there's a historic structure, and that historic structure needs to be reviewed by a number of different people, and what's the point of having the bylaw if you can waiver, if you can provide a waiver? It doesn't make any sense. I mean, it's been used, obviously it was used in Highfield. No, it wasn't. There was a demolition, yes, it was, there was a ninety day demolition delay bylaw, and that meant you had to work very, very hard to get a decision by somebody, well, I won't go into the long story, but it was, ninety days was very difficult. I think they extended it to six months, did they not?
It was previously extended to six months, yes.
Yeah, and six months, it's plenty of time to determine. I really don't like the idea of a waiver. I don't see any point. If somebody can come in and say, I want a waiver, then why have a demolition delay bylaw? But are we going to, are we going to have that meeting, do you think, with the historic district commission or what? I would, I would oppose it the way it's now written.
Well, right now we're simply recommending indefinite postponement.
We are?
Yes.
Oh, fine, then our type of move that we recommend indefinite postponement.
Motion, do we have a second?
Okay.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, Article fourteen.
Finance committee recommendation.
That's finance committee.
So then we don't need to make any recommendation for this? Oh, actually, Mr. Jones, do you have a?
It is very clear that if it's under the purview of the planning board, the finance committee, was the C P C, we do not need to make a recommendation.
Okay, so we do not need to make a recommendation on this article?
Article sixteen.
And actually then for Article twenty four, that's a finance committee recommendation, we do not need to take any action on that then?
On the other, the other one?
Yes, so we won't, we won't even take that off the table.
Do we need to take off the amendment? We had a motion and a second.
Withdraw.
Okay, motion's been withdrawn, thank you.
Withdraw, I'm going to share that.
All right, Article sixteen, we don't need to?
No, we, that will be handled by the C P C.
Okay, but the C P C does fall under our purview.
No. The C P C can make, we don't need to make a recommendation on C P C ones.
We don't?
No, C P C, finance committee, planning board, articles, we do not need to make recommendations.
All right.
We must make recommendations on all others.
Okay.
We've already discussed previously this evening, it'll be a recommendation, but that's postponed with a motion to be prepared by town council.
Okay. Article eighteen.
Our move that we recommend is printed.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, and Article nineteen, as printed is the recommendation with the.
Is this the treatment or filtration facility?
Filtration.
Yes. Oh, my goodness, yes.
And is that the site that was potentially presented tonight?
This was the filtration, water filtration, no treatment.
Potentially, but there are multiple sites being reviewed by town council, in that same area.
So, help me out here then, Article nineteen, let's see, this is in the special, right? So let's, I want to pull up Article nineteen, so we have a. So Article nineteen, see if the town will vote to transfer care, custody, management, control of various parcels of land owned by the town lying between Long Pond and Gifford Street, including a portion of Goodwill Park, to the board of selectmen for municipal purposes, land being deemed necessary in convenient. So does this include all of the parcels there, or only the one, that pizza pie puzzle that was mentioned?
It includes several that are being.
Several parcels.
Would it?
Which we might transfer back if we don't use them.
There's an expect, there's a poss, there's a potential that the jurisdictional change would have to happen. They're still doing the title work on us, we don't have a formal recommendation, but this is a placeholder to keep the town in the opportunity.
Okay.
It's not absolutely clear which agency may have jurisdiction, that's the, that's what's being looked at and is taking considerable period of time.
Okay, so we should probably, then we should vote this just to be safe?
Yes.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the recommendation and explanation for Article nineteen, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Non-unanimous, okay. That brings us to the next agenda item, and thank you all for your patience and sticking with us this evening. And the final item on our agenda is the follow-up of town manager goals and enumeration. And I'll give a shout out to the folks at F C T V around the corner that if they need to stop us at any time, let me know and we will, if needed, but we'll proceed with this. So, we have Mr. Suso's, well, first of all, let's start with his review, which was, he met or, and or exceeded expectations on all categories. The discussions that I had with Ms. Flynn and Mr. Murphy, because they're the two senior members of the board who have been through this process more frequently than I have, and as a reminder, the town manager's contract includes a COLA increase, which the board needs to address that, and then there's the possibility of a merit increase as well based on the fact that his salary, or based on the fact that his review was overwhelmingly positive. Mr. Murphy, you had some feedback?
Just a couple of issues. Number one is the COLA increase is automatic in the town manager's contract.
Okay.
It's based off of, I've done some research today after I spoke with you.
Thank you.
It, it's based off of the, what other department heads get. And just for everybody else's information, Mr. Suso was hired at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Besides his COLA, since he has been here, he was given one incremental raise of four thousand three hundred and twenty five dollars. So that's excluding his COLA, he's been given one raise, which was considered a merit raise. Incidentally, I don't want to cloud the issue, Mr. Suso's contract expires in roughly six months. It would behoove this board to either work to extend his contract, enter into new contract, because based off of his reviews, I think that would be appropriate specifically now versus later.
If I could comment on that? The, the contract does specify that we notify him six months prior to the termination of the contract, that we wish to renew it. And if we don't do that, then there are other certain things that, that take effect. We are much better off doing the notification that we wish to negotiate another contract, rather than use the other options, because they have different parameters to them in the contract. And if you have another contract, we'll see that you get a copy. So my suggestion would be absolutely, that, and May first would be the, the drop dead date, that we would have to notify Mr. Suso before then and actually sit down and negotiate a new contract, which for the most part would really only relate to salary increases or any other things maybe that he want, he may want, or something that we may want, but we should try and get that done by May first at the latest.
Okay.
Because you're right, this board should do the contract, not a new board, because we'll have two whole new members and they won't have any, it's just not fair, it's not fair to Mr. Suso.
To anybody. That's correct.
I think it should be done by May first. I agree with that.
So we should set a date of, you know, like the week after town meeting to have it done.
I think so.
That's mid-April.
So we'll, we'll get that on the agenda?
Well, not on the agenda, this is, this is something that you should delegate somebody from, you know.
Well, there needs to be a formal vote from the board that if, if we want to renew his contract, then the board needs to make that decision, but it's something that we have to formally post, so.
We want to renew the contract, we don't want to just extend it.
Does it make any sense then to have a discussion about remuneration both now and with the new contract?
Well, this compensation, we should have really done it in November. So he's already several months behind.
Yes.
So this really is a November discussion.
So, the most important thing then, the COLA is automatic, so we don't need to worry about that, then the question is of merit, and Mr. Suso's numbers were overwhelmingly positive, so that needs to be considered here. The, the typical, a typical merit raise is going to depend on a lot of things, and I think this is something that, regardless of what we decide this evening, one of the things we're going to need to add to this process and make sure that it is established for the, the next board to, to go through, so that they don't have to sort of reinvent the wheel, is that oftentimes there are guidelines in terms of how much of a merit increase is warranted based on a specific score. For example, in my place of employment, there's often ranges of salaries, and if you're in the upper range of a salary for a position, your potential merit increase might only be, say, one to three percent, and if you're in the lower range of a salary, your, your potential increase might be two to four percent. And again, that's based on merit. So in this situation where.
Typically with town managers, though, it's whoever the board is at the time and what they want to do. That's why it's not specific in the contract, that's why the COLA is in the contract. And it's like, you did an evaluation, this is what it says, here's the current salary, what do you want to do? Have you looked around to see what other town managers are, are making? That's always a good thing to do, is to do a community survey and just see where other people are, which I would imagine that most of them are all ahead of you, but, I mean, based on the community, but it's usually, you know, what you're suggesting is usually done more with department heads, but when it comes to the manager, it's the board sits there and says, we can either, we can go zero to five or zero to seven, or where do you want to go? And then let the board decide what it wants to do.
And just, just for a little background, if this board remembers, and keep in mind, COLAs are not on the table, because COLAs just keep you, your money the same as where your money was.
More like a cost of.
The cost of living. When the board, to build consensus and to have unanimous support, when we hired Mr. Suso, there was some division on the board, and the division was, the offer was, was going to be a hundred and sixty thousand to build consensus. The board, and I was the designated for the board, talked to Mr. Suso and asked him if he would accept a hundred and fifty thousand. Still, to this date, have not come up to where we had talked about as a board, as we hired him to bring him back to where we originally thought it would be. So roughly, if you were to just bring him to the hundred and sixty thousand, which the board had some division, it was, still would have been a majority, but it would, would not have been unanimous, we would have had roughly, would have roughly fifty four hundred dollars as a play to just bring him to the hundred and sixty thousand dollar number. You're the mathematician, I don't know what that would give us percentage-wise, but I'm just saying, when we originally hired him almost, you know, two years ago, that would have been the number that we were originally talking about. So in my mind, there's, there's, there's that, that number there is in play.
But that's not taking, and taking into account the COLAs, so it's not really using, it's using the one sixty as a number from two years ago.
That's correct.
And really, we should be talking about, if we try to get there, one sixty plus.
Well, he's going to, what I'm saying is, we're going to take this increase, the COLAs are, COLAs are just the present value of money, and you know that, in other words, COLA just gives you the present value of money, because present value of money is based on the consumer price index, and that's how you come up with.
Kevin, why don't we ask you, since you've been doing this, to figure out where Julian is now, in terms of, you know, and when those increases occurred and whatnot, and just see what, in your mind, give us a range of what would be appropriate to consider for a, in addition to his compensation.
I would much rather go with a, a number tonight.
You want to go tonight?
And then spend a lot more time working on next year's contract.
But we don't know what his current salary is, unless you just come up with a number.
It doesn't matter his current salary, we're just going to give him an increase, so if I can, someone got a calculator there, if we took a one sixty minus forty three twenty five?
One five five.
Huh?
He can probably do it all in his head.
No, no, give me the, the one sixty, one hundred and fifty five thousand.
Six seventy five.
I'm sorry, I meant to take ten thousand minus the four three two five.
So five thousand, six hundred and seventy five.
But he said two COLAs.
Six hundred, forget the COLAs, he's going to get the COLA automatically, so we're looking to bring him back up to the original one sixty, so we give him a merit raise this year of fifty six hundred and twenty five dollars. Twenty five? Yeah, seventy five dollars. And that would be the original amount that we were, the board was looking to offer Mr. Suso.
Do you want to make that as a motion?
I'd make that motion.
A second.
So it'd be fifty six hundred and seventy five dollar merit increase.
We have a motion and a second.
I'd like to have the discussion about, I'd like a comparison of the other town managers for the population of the town. I think you will be very surprised on the Cape that maybe Falmouth is in, in the higher ten percent of salaries.
Oh, you're so far off, it's unbelievable, because when we were hiring Mr. Suso, we looked at that long and hard, in the town of Chatham, they pay somewhere about a hundred and eighty thousand.
Probably more than that now, it's probably at a hundred and ninety.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, no.
A hundred and ninety now.
We thought you said.
Oh, no, oh, no, oh, no, I'm not saying that at all.
Chatham is rich.
Well, Chatham is also isolated too, so there's certain, some of the things that have to be considered.
But I, I do think that when we. I mean, it's a rich community.
Yes.
I do think that when you're doing it, it should be at a point, not so much of just saying what the merit is, or the COLA is a given, is that he should be in the level for the, for the population of the town and his years of experience, and then you take a look on the Cape, and you will see Falmouth is low.
I still think in the next contract is the time to really spend the time to do the research and make that happen.
You just want to bring it up to the hundred and sixty right now.
Right now, and then in a month and a half, we're going to be voting.
Again, another month, we'll be voting new compensation, right? But it wouldn't take a factor.
Maybe not compensation, we'll be voting a contract extension, and then they'll decide on compensation next fall. You will, this time next year.
So you're saying one sixty right now is what the motion is?
No, it doesn't, there are increases.
Fifty, fifty six seventy five, it's a number.
The motion right now is to give Mr. Suso a merit increase of five thousand six hundred seventy five dollars, and the logic behind that was that this brings the original one hundred fifty, irrespective of the COLA increases that have happened since, Mr. Suso was originally offered a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The board gave him a prior merit increase of four thousand three hundred twenty five dollars, and then this five thousand six hundred seventy five dollars would bring that one hundred fifty up to one hundred sixty thousand, and of course, he's also had the merit, or excuse me, the COLA increases as well. Now, that's the motion that's on the floor right now. I'd actually like to go, I'd like the board to consider something more, and I know, I'm, I'm not sure how the, I'm sure there'll be some howls from some members of the public, but the, the review that Mr. Suso got was overwhelmingly positive and, and very heavily favored and exceeds in most categories. Moreover, I think, well, I, I think that right there is, is worthy of considering something more than just five thousand six hundred seventy five dollars. Off the top of my head, and without having done some additional research, and that's why I'm saying we probably should have some guidelines established for the board.
Make it six thousand.
Going forward. I was actually going to suggest seven thousand five hundred.
I misunderstood about the contract procedure, so I, I would want to, I'd feel more comfortable going higher than we had originally.
We have a motion on the floor, do we want to withdraw the motion?
I'd be happy to withdraw the motion for discussion purposes, I was just trying to get us a baseline.
Yep, okay. So motion's withdrawn, I'd recommend seventy five hundred dollars at this point, I think, but going forward, and again, so we're not reinventing the wheel and so Mr. Suso has some clarity in coming years as to what he might expect for a certain level of performance, I think we do need to establish, I mean, we've already redeveloped the review process into something that's simpler and easier for us to work with, something that's more, provides more clarity to Mr. Suso in terms of a document that can be understood and is not overly complex. I think the next step that this board needs to take, and hopefully we can do that in the coming weeks before there is a, a new board that comes in. the coming weeks before there is a new board that comes in, but to at least establish some guidelines to say, listen, for a community of this population, for this role, that these are the expected salary ranges, and if you're within this salary range, at the low end, you might expect this for a merit increase based on a meets or an exceeds, and at the higher end, you might expect a certain percentage increase based on a meets or exceeds.
And the other thing you can, you take into consideration, too, is the charter. This is a strong town manager form of government. It's not a weak town manager form of government, that makes a big difference, because he makes a lot of decisions.
This is effective?
November 1st. Retro to November 1st.
Retro to November 1st, because that's when the contract started.
We have money in the budget. I'm sure you can find some money in the budget.
So you're saying 160 retro, is that what you're saying?
No, 7,500.
7,500 additional.
Merit increase, period.
Would the recommendation be that the future evaluations and this discussion, we try to push it, future boards do in November?
But he doesn't.
So that's when you say 160, yes. So you will be here, Doug, so you can push it for enough.
Well, and we'll take that as a separate motion, but, you know, Mr. Suso, even with the 75,000 will not be the highest paid town employee.
But we should realize, too, that we do have to get this contract done by the middle of it, and that is just going to happen.
And that will, we'll work on that in the coming weeks, just so everyone's edification, that based on, again, irrespective of the COLAs that he's received, a salary of 155,000, the 7,500 comes out to a 4.8% increase, which I think-
So we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion.
So why don't you call for the vote?
We don't know exactly because of the COLAs.
Because of the COLAs, yeah.
I haven't put COLAs in my head, give me the final dollar.
Well, irrespective of the COLAs, you're looking at approximately 162.
Yeah, 162, close to 160.
All right, okay. All right, so we're all, everybody's good, no other questions? We have a motion and a second for 7,500 merit increase. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Well, you've come along with it.
Thank you for your use, Bruce.
You're welcome. Boy.
Thank you for your vote of confidence.
What else have you got going tonight?
Just, we know, and I agree with Mrs. Flynn, that we need to, first of all, I think it would be important for us to take a, to take a vote, that we, one of us work to, with the town manager, to come up with a contract renewal, extension.
It's not on our agenda this evening, so we can't take those actions.
Well, the whole issue is, we can just say to him, we'd like to have him take, take the contract and review it himself, and see what he would like to do.
Well, you know, in two weeks, Mr. Jones and I will make sure that this is on the agenda, and that we can have the formal vote, and I'm hoping also, in a couple of weeks, maybe I can provide for you all some sort of a draft regarding salary ranges and whatnot, at least language, so that we have some guidelines to work with.
I can get the salaries.
That would be even better, awesome.
I know somebody in MMA that'll look into me.
The other aspect is goals. There are suggested goals here in front of you, there are a number of them, my suggestion, and perhaps we'll come back to this in a couple of weeks because of the late hour, but my suggestion would be to review this, let's try to get this down to, say, no more than three to five goals, so that the town manager is not being pulled in too many different directions. And let's try to prioritize these, and I would, I'll put a plug in for the town's website, that's something that, as we heard during our workshop with the committee chairs, that that was a recommendation of the charter review committee, and it is an issue that continues to come up, so that is one of the things that I would certainly like to see in the, in the coming year for an objective. Even, even if it's not in whole, at least there might be some milestones that can be achieved.
And I'm sure the town manager understands, if we take the goals off of here, that doesn't mean we don't want them done.
Indeed. Or that they may not be amended subsequently. Incidentally, I don't know necessarily whether we have to narrow the goals just down to three, because there's some of these that are, as you say, Doug-
He's going to do them.
These going to do them anyways. So I don't, I don't say necessarily whether they have to come off the table. You don't want to make, you want him to be able to check off some goals, you don't want to make every goal so almost virtually unattainable.
Well, and understand also that when we talk about goals, or sometimes the word is used, that's used as objectives, there is his job description, and a lot of these things fall under his job description. There are some of these things, like the town's website, which I think, although you could consider that part of his job description, it's one of those things that if it was never done, the town's website is there, it's always going to be there, and even if it never gets any attention, it's there. But it's one of those things that it's been given special attention by the charter review committee, it's an issue that continues to come up, and it's something that we could task the town manager to say that, listen, we consider this to be a priority issue, and we want, we want it to have a greater attention and a higher priority than other aspects of the day-to-day operations.
I mean, for example, two and three are the only ones I think he could get away without doing.